Welcome to the regular town council meeting, town of Cave Creek, Arizona, Tuesday, May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The meeting's now in order. We'll have the pledge allegiance and Sean as a new person in the audience for asking you to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. A roll call, Karma?
Certainly, Mayor, Councilmember Augurton, Councilmember Bunch,
Here.
Councilmember Elkema,
Here.
Councilmember McGuire,
Present.
Councilmember Rhodes,
Present.
Vice Mayor Roy,
Here.
Mayor Morris, I know you're here.
Present.
Public announcements, I don't have any today, but if someone else has one.
I do have one. This afternoon, I got a copy of the strategic plan for the museum, and it is outstanding. I haven't had a chance to dig at it really well, but it's a lot of work and it it really describes a future that makes sense.
Turn your mic on.
Awesome.
It's awesome. Well, the museum directors in the audience, I think she probably heard that.
Yeah, she did.
She's smiling. Called to the public?
Mayor, we just have the one electronic card from Patricia.
Okay, I will read that. This is a meeting comment card from Patricia Baker on Twelfth Street, North Twelfth Street, so that would be out in Desert Hills. The comment is, need a water meter at thirty-seven-two-one-five North Twelfth Street. I'm renovating this eyesore property in a beautiful neighborhood, and there's a pipe on the corner, but no water meter. Neighbors have Craig Creek water, and I have been denied. This is not new construction. It's been there since the seventies. I am a current customer at another location, but also like to have Cave Creek water, thirty-seven-two-one-five North Twelfth Street, which I am renovating. So I returned this over to town staff to deal with. The town manager report?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just have a couple of things. It's starting to get warm out, and so we are working to finalize the safety signage for the town that would cover Spurcross Recreation Area and our trails. The mock-up with the information for hikers at the entrances, at the entrance to Spurcross and at the base or entrance to the trails would say, you know, give instructions and guidance about their cell phones, particularly going out in Spurcross and keeping their phone on airplane mode and things like that. The mock-up should be done tomorrow and finalized. We'll have the signs made and out sometime next week.
Is the county doing that, or are we doing that?
We're doing that. They are very large. You saw them for Bike Week that we got last year, so very large, like a sandwich board type sign. And so it'd be like at the base of Black Mountain and over at the entrance, kind of going down to Goja Trail and out at Spurcross by the little hut they have there for their volunteers. And the fire danger will be elevated to very high by sometime next week because of the fire danger starting to dry out. So we just want people to be safe out there, especially when they're hiking, but also to mitigate any fire to not generate spark-causing activities. They'll need a permit, so we'll raise that up to very high.
Okay, we'll deal the consent agenda now. Approval of the April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three regular council meeting minutes. Number two is deed of gift from the TNT Real Estate Holdings LLC for right-of-way parcel two eleven dash forty-six dash zero two one, generally located at the southwest corner of Olson Road, the fifty-sixth street. A lot split case L dash twenty-two zero five requested by TNT Real Estate Holdings LLC located at the southwest corner of Fifty Street, Fifty-sixth Street in Olson, parcel two eleven dash forty-six dash zero two one. A deed of gift from focus on the family for a fifteen-foot streetscape easement located over a portion of sixty-three thirty-three East Cave Creek Road, Cave Creek, Arizona. A deed of gift from focus on the family for a fifteen-foot parking easement located over a portion of parcel two eleven dash ten dash zero zero six G at sixty-three thirty-three East Cave Creek Road, Cave Creek, Arizona. And finally, a deed of gift from focus on the family for right-of-way over a portion of sixty-three thirty-three East Cave Creek Road, Cave Creek, Arizona. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. General agenda items, council discussion approval authorized the mayor to enter into an agreement with Baker Tilly US LLP for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three audit for an amount up to thirty-eight thousand five hundred dollars for the financial statement audit and four thousand five hundred dollars for a single audit if required. It's presented by the mayor.
Mr. Mayor, Brian Hammerly of Baker Tilly is also here to answer any questions or have a conversation with you, and he does have a presentation for council.
Look at Brian.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Again, my name is Brian Hammerly. I'm the lead audit partner with Baker Tilly for the town of Cave Creek's external audit. You have a brief presentation for you, and then I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have regarding the audit this year. So usually at the beginning of there. Usually at the beginning of each audit, we do meet with at least one member of council, usually the mayor. We met with the mayor last year at the beginning of our audit. That's usually around October, September, October timeframe, but this year, it's my understanding, council's interested in creating what's considered a internal audit committee or department of sorts. And with that, there was some information that the mayor was wanting the firm to provide to you. So in order to do that, we decided we would go ahead and do our communication with governance early this year as opposed to waiting for September when we start the audit. These are the members of your audit team. Historically, the manager there, Kaylee Lewis, she's at Queen Creek, and Marissa's at Scottsdale, and then, of course, I'm the partner on the audit. We have three deliverables usually with your audit. The first one is what statute requires by the state of Arizona, you need a financial statement audit in accordance with government accounting standards and what we consider GAAP. So we come out, we do that audit, and we look to make sure that your financial statements can be relied upon within a material amount for each one of your amounts within the financial statements. This is required by the state because you need it for rating agencies, you know, rate, utility rate studies, things of that nature. So every city in town in the state of Arizona is required to get an audit of their financial statements. The second deliverable is related to what we call the Yellow Book Report. This is on compliance laws, grants, contracts, grant regulations, things of that nature. We provide an opinion in the fact of whether or not you're in compliance materially with the financial statement. So for instance, if you're out of compliance for a fifty-dollar thing somewhere in the town, we wouldn't report something that'd be immaterial to both the users and the financial statements. But if we found something very material that was out of compliance with state law or federal regulation or debt covenants, then we would, of course, report that and that that deliverable. The third deliverable is related to what we call the single audit. This is for the federal single audit for any grant money you receive over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in one year that is spent over that amount. So the federal government says, hey, if we're giving you grant money, usually this is, recently, this has been related to the ARPA money, the COVID-nineteen money. If you spend over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in one year, then we have, we're required to audit that specifically, having spent it, make sure you're in compliance with that, and make sure that the the town is meeting all the requirements of the federal government for that spending. We also do things like your expenditure limitation report that's required by the utter general's office to make sure you don't overspend in relation to expenditures for each year. Data collection forms are required by the federal government for all grants. Our communication with governance, things that are non-atest services, we do actually help compile the financial statements. So although management is doing the accounting all year, debits and credits, you know, we take the trial balance and we put it in a form that is required by government accounting standards. We prepare any adjusting journal entries that we consider necessary with management. If we had any adjusting journal entries that management didn't agree with, we would, of course, report those to you. Our audit timeline, we've moved it up, obviously, so May sixteenth, I'm presenting to those charged with governance. That's all of you. We will be doing our planning for fieldwork and our preliminary fieldwork June, July this year. Our final fieldwork is usually in September and October, and then we try and report out to city council by the end of December, November, December, depending on how quickly we can get the supporting documentation for the audit. This is some information regarding our audit planning considerations. We look over, you know, we do use a materiality. We use statistically valid sampling. We don't audit every transaction in the town. We have to be selective. We audit every transaction in the town. We'd be here for months and months, and it'd be a very expensive audit. Other items that we have to communicate with governance, we do look for management override of any internal controls. We are concerned about improper revenue recognition risk due to fraud, but that's the case at every city in town. Utility receivables and revenues are very high risk for us at this particular city or town. Capital asset reconciliations to capital outlay expenditures and grant expenditures for allowability. Those are the items we really focused on in the past few audits. Things that you should be aware of is that in the middle of there, the utility register reconciliation to trial balance has been a management letter comment in previous years. It's difficult at times to reconcile between what the billing registers are showing to what the general ledger shows. It takes quite a bit of time to figure out, and then, of course, we usually get to a place where we feel comfortable that it's materially correct. This is some more information on our planning, our final fieldwork, and our audit completion. So we start with today, and we end with me back out here in December, presenting the results of our audit. If there's any material weaknesses and if can definitive seats or any control differences. I stuck this slide in here. This is what is not covered in this audit. So the town is not supposed to rely on this audit as a substitute for internal controls, meaning we're not really out here to be the internal control. We're testing to make sure your internal controls are in place to prevent detecting any misstatements due to fraud or error. We can perform certain other things that are not under the scope of the statute required audit. We can do advisory work. We cannot do consulting work, and we cannot do management functions. And the reason why is because we need to maintain our independence in fact and appearance. If we came out here and we acted as the interim finance director, or we made decisions on how your coding, certain journal entries, we would impair independence. However, we can help with things like utility rate studies, flow charts for interim audits, Inflation Reduction Act studies, budget projections, or any fiscal stability reports that you have. So that first column are things that we can do. The second two columns are the things we can't do. We can't reconcile your bank statements, because then we would be auditing our own work, and that would obviously impair independence. So that's, I thought that was a good, important slide to have in case anyone had any questions on the differences to what we do and what you might have from other accountants or CPAs. This is a resource. There's a website Baker Tilly has related to audit committees. It's very helpful as far as setting up audit committees. This is about as much as I can provide without impairing my independence. We can't come out and set up your we can't help you set up your audit committee because the audit committee is really supposed to be oversight of the auditor, so we would, again, it would give the appearance that we're basically getting you guys to do what we want you to do, when in reality you're supposed to be oversight of our audit as governance. So, but this is a good resource page you can use on the website Baker Tilly has. It's used by cities and towns all over the United States of America. Baker Tilly is tenth largest firm in the United States, very large government practice all over, including Arizona. With that, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
The, you, you mentioned the utility revenues and operations not going into the into what, into the
The trial balance.
Okay, and how long has that been going on?
Oh, that's been going on for years. Really, what's happening is there's more detail in the billing registers than there is in the trial balance. So we're always having to try and figure out, you know, late fees or certain sales taxes or things of that nature, where they're being recorded in the revenues for the trial balance. And each year, we have to kind of re-review how that's being done. I think the last time we gave a comment on that was at least two years ago, because I think in the past two years, we've had good enough documentation from the town to be able to reconcile back to the trial balance within a material amount. So the major billings, your normal water billings, they're fine. They come in just fine. It's really the smaller items on that billing register that we have a hard time trying to make sure are being put in the right buckets of revenue on your trial balance. I don't know. It was that? Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that answers my question. It is maybe the someone on staff would say, is this something being looked at, or is there a fixed insight or intended to this?
Yes, as Mr. Hamerly
As Mr. Hamerly said, we've been working on that, and it's improved since about two years ago significantly. So I don't know the exact status today, if they've resolved everything, but they've made some significant improvements in it.
You may remember, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Jane Thompson, was that her? Fuller, sorry, Jane Fuller. She played a big role in helping us crosswalk between the two systems, and I think since then, it's been remedied.
Very good. Thank you. Other questions from council? We've done a good job.
Excellent.
Looking forward to seeing you.
Yeah, and you know, I'm going to stick around for the next few items in case you have any questions related to the grants that are on the agenda. So I'll be here until until you're done. Thank you.
Thank you. We have public comment on this item.
Mayor, we have no request to speak for this item.
Anything from council? Seeing none, we're on to item number two, council discussion and approval of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three budget transfer of eight million five hundred and seventy-nine thousand four hundred dollars from the Capital Improvement Fund.
Mayor?
Yes.
There was actually a motion associated with the item one for a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to enter into the agreement. Sorry.
You've already caught me, and you just got here. So is, we're looking for a motion then on this first agenda item.
Yeah, I'll do it. Motion to approve and authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with Tilly Baker US LLP for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three audit for an amount of up to thirty-eight, five, thirty-eight thousand five hundred for the financial statement audit and four thousand five hundred for a single audit if required.
Second. All those in favor? Are there any comments?
Only that the name is Baker Tilly, not Tilly Baker.
Other comments? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I'll be happy to perform the roll call for you. Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Councilmember Elkema?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Roy?
Yes.
Councilmember Augurton?
Aye.
Mayor Morris?
Aye.
Now we're on to item. Thank you for all the help I'm getting. Council discussion approval of fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three budget transfer of eight million five hundred and seventy-nine thousand four hundred dollars from the Capital Improvement Fund, twenty-five dash zero one zero 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 dash forty-one hundred to the following general fund departments, twenty thousand dollars to administration, IT Division oh one dash zero two two zero zero dash four one two zero, thirty-seven thousand two hundred dollars to fleet, zero one dash zero zero five five hundred dash forty-one twenty, two hundred thousand dollars to Public Works, Rhodes Division, zero one dash zero one six two hundred dash four one zero zero, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the Building and Safety Department, Rodeo Grounds Division, zero one dash zero zero five three hundred dash forty-one zero zero, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the Fire Department for fire equipment, zero one dash zero zero seven two hundred dash forty-one twenty, one million four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for fire station improvements, zero one dash zero zero seven two hundred dash forty-one hundred, and the following utility fund departments, seven hundred and forty thousand dollars to the wastewater fund, four zero dash zero two one one two five dash forty-one hundred, eight hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars to Cave Creek Water Fund, fifty dash zero five zero one two five dash forty-one hundred, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to Desert Hills Water Fund, fifty-five dash zero five zero one two five dash forty-one hundred, four million two hundred and twenty thousand dollars, two hundred, four hundred, four million two hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred dollars to twenty-twenty-three WIFALONE Fund, sixty-five dash zero five zero one three zero dash forty-one hundred, and a budget transfer of three hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, two hundred and eighty-three, three hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars from the Grant Fund, two zero dash zero two four one hundred dash two four seven eight to the Open Space Acquisition Fund, nineteen dash zero 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 one three zero dash nine six nine nine.
Wow.
That's a long one.
War and peace.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and Council. The fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three budget was prepared using a Capital Improvement Fund to appropriate current year capital projects. This was different than how capital projects had been accounted for at the town in the past. Our previous protocol allowed capital to be tracked and recorded in the departments that will eventually use the capital when it's completed and placed in service. After the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three budget was adopted and the new Capital Improvement Fund was discussed with our auditors, they recommended as part of best practice to continue with our previous accounting of reflecting capital project expenditures in the departmental funds for a cleaner reporting picture. The capital expenditures were reported or were appropriated in the Capital Improvement Fund for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three budget. The town is under the home rule expenditure limitation, which is the total amount of the adopted budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three in the amount of forty million sixty-eight thousand two hundred. That amount cannot be exceeded. However, expenditures can be transferred from one fund to another fund if approved by council to do so. Staff is requesting council to consider a request to approve fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three budget appropriation of transfers in the amount of two million eight hundred and thirty-two thousand two hundred from the Capital Improvement Fund to the following general fund departments. These are the departments that Mayor had just read through. Do I need to go through those again, Carrie? Okay.
Please.
Okay. So basically, that's moving money out of the Capital Improvement Fund that was established back to the general fund departments where those capital expenditures were occurring. We were also requesting a budget appropriation transfer in the amount of a million eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand to move from the Capital Improvement Fund to the utility funds, specifically wastewater, Cave Creek Water and Desert Hills Water, and from the Capital Improvement Fund of four million two hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred from the Capital Improvement Fund to the new WIFALONE Fund. And then there was an extra appropriation in the Grant Fund for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, and we are proposing a appropriation transfer from the Grant Fund, that extra appropriation from the Grant Fund to the Open Space Acquisition Fund to cover the thirty point six acre Spurcross purchase that was made earlier this fiscal year. Council had approved that purchase, but the appropriation was not in that fund. So this request would move the extra appropriation in the Grant Fund to cover the expenditure that was made there. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council?
Yeah, I just want to confirm, this was, this is money from last year's budget, correct?
Correct.
It's not next year's budget?
Correct. It's fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no more questions, this has public comment?
No public comment received for this item, Mayor.
Okay. So I guess we're looking for a motion.
I'll make the motion. Motion to approve the FY two thousand and twenty-three budget transfer of eight million five hundred and seventy-nine thousand four hundred dollars from the Capital Improvement Fund to the appropriate general fund and utility fund departments and a budget transfer of three hundred and sixty-six thousand two hundred and eighty-three dollars from the Grant Fund to the Open Space Acquisition Fund.
Second. We have the comments?
I know. I think this is business as usual. Council approved it, and so we need to do it.
Just housekeeping, so it looks cleaner and and more transparent on the paperwork.
Other council members?
We're bound to not be able to go over our budget limit, but we can anticipate all of our expenses, so this is normal practice.
Seeing no other comments, I guess we'll have to have a roll call on this.
Councilmember Elkema?
Yes.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Roy?
Yes.
Councilmember Augurton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bunch?
Yes.
Mayor Morris?
Aye. Motion passes seven-zero. We're on to the next item, council discussion approval appointment of town council to the audit committee. I sent out to council, I had asked to carry to send out to council the document from the Government Finance Officer Association, which is one of many, many, many that recommend that in saying that a best practice is that the that the top committee in any entity, whether that's a board of directors or a council or whatever, that the auditors work for that committee, because the management is being audited rather than the auditors working for the management. And this puts that practice into effect on a basic level. And it, it basically for this year, and until we get rolling, we can change it as we wish, but it makes the town council the audit committee, basically. And so this implements that best practice and begins it. And so we would be receiving the reports from the auditors, and we would approve those just as we have in the past, but we'd be more directly involved in the management and selection. If we decided to change auditors, that would come from the audit committee, which at this time would be the the town council. So it any questions from council on this?
Other than to say thank you for having the initiative to get this done. I think it's a good practice.
A public comment on this?
No public comment for this item, Mayor.
Okay, I will make the motion because I have a change here. So motion to appoint all members of the town council to the audit committee with the mayor and vice mayor serving as chair and the vice mayor as vice, vice chair. Oh, excuse me, that, I'm going to withdraw that. I'm just going to read that as it is. I see that I misinterpreted that sentence, so I'm going to read it as is. Motion to appoint all members of the town council, the audit committee with the mayor and vice mayor serving as chair and vice chair, the council members serving as committee members.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes seven-zero. We're on to item number four, council discussion possible approval of resolution R two thousand and twenty-three dash eleven, a resolution of the mayor and town council, the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, approving federal procurement requirements in connection with federal grants presented by the town manager.
Mayor, members of council? The town, as you know, has applied for several federally funded grants, and I believe it was in two thousand and seventeen the regulations changed that when you accept federal funds, and it's over a certain amount, as Mr. Hammerly mentioned, as part of the audit, there would be a single audit on those funds for that particular project. And we are now required to have a procurement policy in place using the federal regulations so that that's on record, and that would go in or with the contract that is let for any kind of construction or bidding for projects that use federal funding. So we're setting, we have set this up in a resolution, and that way we'll have this in place before we ever have a single audit on any of those projects that would qualify for a single audit. We don't expect any single audits for the current fiscal year ending June thirtieth of twenty-three, but we wanted to have this in place in case they have a different opinion than the staff at the moment. We don't believe there will be a single audit, but it'll be set up for next year. Any of the grants that we've got coming for the next year, and we know we've gotten at least one. If it meets the dollar amount threshold, it would require a single audit, and we want to have this in place so that we comply and meet the criteria and pass the single audit.
Questions from council?
I have a question.
Go ahead. I noticed that we received a grant writing
I noticed that we received a grant writing. I don't know, an opportunity to be to have grant writing training. That showed up, I don't know, May tenth. And it's out there a bit. Are we sending somebody to that? Do we have a grant writing expert that we can?
We don't have a grant writing expert. We have several people looking into those kind of grants and what would be beneficial for the town and looking at. At how we can do that. So there are different programs. This is one of them that we've identified a staff member to look into. To this program and see what it offers us.
Great.
Um, Carrie, could you just give us a status update on the federal grants that we? Have been notified that we're in contention for? Well, we have been notified that we're receiving the water smart grant, which would. Fund the meter replacement for the utility. And so new meters mean more accuracy means, you know, we're billing accurately and capturing the revenue for the actual water use. And how much was that for? That was.
How much?
Five hundred thousand, okay. That's excellent. Okay. And then another one that we're also in contention for is. We we applied for two point five million through. All of the available legislators that represent the state. Through Kirsten Sinema's office, through Mark Kelly's office, through. Representative Schweiker's office and also through. Ruben Gallegos office, his was a slightly different funding. So there's the congressional direct funding. Application for two point five million and then there. I don't remember the name of it, but there it's another funding source, community project funding, something like that through Gallegos office. So we have four applications, but we'll for two point five million, we'll only get one. They they, if if all of them get money, they decide where the money. How it gets distributed. So our project would only be funded once. We've been notified by Senator Kelly's office that. His office has gone through their list of grant applications and made a recommendation that ours be moved on in the process to. The federal committees that start reviewing that. And that was to help support our. Phoenix interconnect. Our Phoenix interconnect project, yes. Very good. Fingers crossed.
Other questions? I have one compound question. Is this? A, is this going to change all of our procurement procedures or just the procurement procedures on federal? And second is, is there any increased cost for this?
Mayor, this does not change all of our procurement procedures. We follow the state procurement requirements and and most of that's. If not all is listed in the town code. The federal procurement process is only for. Projects that we are using federally federal funds to fund the project. And they have to meet. A a certain dollar amount has to be a threshold, a dollar amount to have a single audit. And it costs money in the in the sense of when you do a single audit, there's an additional cost. But it doesn't cost. Well. You could define what additional cost would be, but the project is by American. Davis Bacon, all of those regulations at the federal government, that federal government requires.
So there's probably some additional cost.
Yes.
An addition of forty five hundred bucks for the.
The project may be more, but we've got funding, you know, in terms of grant or loans that would cover that.
Questions? Okay, seeing no further questions, we have public comment on this.
No public comment for this item, Mayor.
Um. At this point, then we are looking for for a motion.
Mayor, we'll do it. Motion to approve resolution R twenty twenty three dash eleven. Resolution, the mayor and town council, the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, approving federal procurement requirements in connection with federal grants.
Second. Uh, this is not financial, so I guess we can do this by voice vote. All those in favor, seeing by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No? The ayes have it, motion carries seven zero. So we're on to council discussion approval resolution R twenty twenty three dash ten, resolution of the mayor. And town council, the town of Cave Creek, Maricopa County, Arizona, approving concurrent ground leases for town property located at forty three hundred East Carefree Highway. And vacant property located within the town core presented by the development services director.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This item is, as stated, a resolution. To allow the town manager to execute or enter into a concurrent ground lease for. Approximately five acres located at the wastewater treatment facility, a seventy six acre site located approximately at forty three hundred East Carefree Highway. Essentially adjacent to the food bank building. That hopefully will get permits in here soon and begin construction on that facility. In exchange for that, it'd be a fifty year. Ground lease executed for property. It's approximately one acre located adjacent to the Kiwanis building. Right around the corner from the bars and restaurants there. It's very, very much in close proximity to that. This has been. A a discussion that I've had with the owner of that property since really the food bank came through the process. They've looked at this site. They've actually. Co-opt on this site with the town of Cave Creek Public Works Department for several years. It's currently in use and operations as an aggregate storage and operations site by the public works department. What the, what our lease partner would be looking at doing is putting in a structure. Set down below, you know, kind of in a bowl there. It's within a FEMA recognized floodway or floodplain, excuse me. To houses, equipment and things of that nature. See if I've missed anything about the location and the intended uses. So stated what the town would do with the one acre parcel in the town core would improve that to accommodate approximately one hundred parking spaces. There is some existing vegetation that the town will try to salvage and relocate either on site. Or in the case of some of the Saguaro Spears locate out into the medians, which we've done in the past. With that, I'll answer any questions that council may have. Thank you.
Councilman McGuire. Luke, would there be issues if they're flooding on Cave Creek and need to evacuate the their equipment from that site?
On in on the Carefree Highway side of the.
Yes, exactly.
No, the the site really. Terraces down as it gets into the wash. So the wash itself, the the. The really bottom of the wash is the floodway and then it steps up to areas that are considered floodplain. Then up to the street, it comes up again. So it's kind of three levels as it goes down towards Cave Creek.
So it's never gotten to the level where it would have been a.
Not since our public works, not since our public works department has gone in and and really improved the grading at that site. No.
Thank you, Luke. Nice work.
Oh, I was just wondering, Luke, how did we arrive at the number of years for the lease term?
Um. Not my idea. I'm not sure. I I think it's.
Fifty years is awfully long. We we. Are currently in another contract for fifty years that, in my opinion, has caused, you know, some. Trouble for us as a town. So I I'm just a little concerned that a fifty year lease is a little too long.
Uh, Mayor Vice Mayor. The the leases were drawn up. Attorney Sims and the African's attorney Carolyn DeCenife. Worked together on this and I think they they decided that fifty years with the with the built in terms of termination. Were acceptable to both parties and agreeable so that the if necessary, the lease could be terminated.
Okay, would you like to expound on that?
Directly. Have to get into. So right on page two of the agreement, seventy eight in your packet, the right to cancel, the landlord cancellation, tenant count cancellation. Ex- expend expounds on that hundred and one hundred and twenty day written notice to each party. Cancellation can can occur with after sixty days. There there are multiple outs.
That's good.
In in the contract, if if it's not amenable to both parties after a certain time.
Okay, as long as we're protected.
Right.
I'm good with it.
I have a question kind of along that line, Luke, in that liabilities, if this is a lease, it means we're still, we still own the property. And. So what if there is a massive deluge and their. Front loader gets washed away and they decide they're tired of the place and everything turns to, you know what? How are we protected there? And the same for. The person that's. You know, leasing property to us in town. Are we? We have liabilities there?
Uh, yes, yeah, the the liability insurance is specified on page eighty one of your packet, page five of of the document. The tenants shall maintain public liability insurance in an amount not less than one million dollars per occurrence. And so on and so forth. So there there is liability insurance there for those cases.
Well, I'm sure.
If you're there, just a couple of questions. Luke, on the property, if this was acquired, does this give us access to the Kiwanis parking lot? Or is this going to be sequestered separately from the Zay closers and big cats?
But that's a very good question and something I've thought about in great detail is that there might be opportunity for cross access easement through the Kiwanis parking lot. For expressly that use to allow, you know. Better vehicular access to that site ingress and egress from that site. But it is something that I haven't spoken to Kiwanis about. In great detail, but it may be something that that we examine in the future.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is if the property was acquired by the town. Does the town? And this would be free parking, is that correct? The town's not planning to charge for individual parking.
That is correct.
Okay. Does the town have the ability, not so much for ingress and egress, but do we get the additional spaces? Owned on the Kiwanis property for overflow parking for this lot or? Is that's not something that's part of this deal?
That is not something that is that is a component of this agreement. No.
Okay. Um. Mr. Chairman, at some point, if this is approved this evening, I would love to get support for an add on that. We do, or we probably already have, if the council could get a report and a map of where we have public parking in town. This is one place.
So I actually was going to bring up a a motion.
Oh, okay. Well, then let me.
A little bit later.
Okay.
What I just have some similar concerns. We're piecemealing parking. Driving through town this weekend, driving through town at night. I've seen, I mean, I've seen. Problems all over the place. So we're addressing one little specific piece, but we're not addressing the overall situation.
That's all I have.
Okay. Other other questions from this? I I have a couple. First, it looks like these agreements, there's two agreements. It looks like there's reciprocity. I didn't count the words, but it looks like it's almost totally reciprocal, the same language in each of the two.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and and it is a a effectively a short term lease because the cancellation terms.
Correct.
Yeah. What is this going to to cost us?
Another good question, Mr. Mayor. I have. Gotten pricing from Granger for parking space bumpers. At this point, it's unknown what we would be able to do in-house for tree, tree and cactus salvage and relocation, but there will be some cost there. And I've had discussions with the town engineer about the possibility of chip sealing. The lot we can do, we could likely perform the grading and grubbing once any salvage is done in-house. But there will be some costs associated with chip sealing that that surface. And putting in parking bumpers. Not astronomical by any stretch. I'm not sure what the going rate is right now for per square foot on a double chip seal, but. It's not. Not mind blowing.
Uh, not mind blowing is.
We have money, we have money in.
Objective.
Yeah, no.
And quality.
To answer your question, there there is money in the budget this year that could that could be put at at doing the work.
Yeah.
And this year not next.
Any proposal. Any proposal from any department. That has expenses or cost outlays or in or revenue. That has those contained in here so that we can see what, because right now by if if we all say yes and approve this, we're buying a pig and a poke, which is what it's going to cost us. It also, from what I'm looking at here, it's triple net. So we'll be paying property taxes that that we'd be covering the property taxes that they pay. Is that correct too?
I I believe so. I would need to verify that. So and they aren't going to be paying property taxes because it's our land? I'm on the five acres, they wouldn't be paying property taxes because that's our land and yet we would be paying their property taxes. Right? I'm not exactly sure.
We we don't pay property.
We don't pay property tax on the on the wastewater truly.
Terrible, but that's one of my problems. That that's not a reciprocal because it's, I mean, they're saving.
At all.
They're saving property taxes, which is another cost for us. This the second thing is. We're planning on improvements, which is maybe a chip seal and and parking and some grading and and recovery of plant life. What are they planning as far as improvements on their site? Is is that? At or about this, at or above the same amount that we are, I'm looking at as an inhibitor towards early cancellation.
Right. The value that they would make to that five acre site if they were to walk away from it would be. A vast. Improvement, that's not the right word, of an asset to the town. So if they if they were to put in their structure. To house their equipment and they were to walk away from the lease and leave that structure behind, that would be. A huge improvement to our asset.
So most sites have some skin in the game as far.
Absolutely.
It wouldn't be a a a a quick and easy divorce. There's some. Problems with property.
Correct. Yeah, there there's a section on trade fixtures and and the improvements that they would be making to that site.
Okay, other questions?
I'd really like to hear some numbers on them. What are we investing? What are they investing? Yep. I I think we have a bigger problem than the mayor. It's like I talked to you about Monday. I think. I'd like to make a motion to table this. Let me go ahead and read the motion I wrote. I move that we table a proposed resolution R twenty twenty three ten. Regarding parking until we can gain a better understanding of the details of parking required within the town court. We need to understand the parking shortfall in total, why it exists and ensure the town. Ensure that any solution provided be in accordance with Arizona law. Therefore, I request that the town staff be tasked with laying out the current parking situation in the town core that identifies the following four pieces of information. One, each building in the town core. Two, the approved building occupancy limits of each building. Three, additional occupancy after construction for each building. For example, outdoor seating, patio tables or other occupied spaces. And four, the actual number of parking spaces at each building. I realize that a lot of these things happen in the past, but we can't really do anything about that. We have to live with what we have. So I also would like that that data be presented back to the council. In both a tabular form and overlaid onto a map of the town core, identifying identifying each element of collected information. Before we make any determination on a parking solutions.
Okay, that motion is on the floor. That that was a motion. So.
That was a motion.
Uh, we're looking for a second on that motion. Is there a second on?
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion.
It just seems to me. We might solve a solve a problem for Kiwanis. We might solve a problem for Janes and a couple of the other places that are right across the street there. But. On week weeknights, Wednesday nights, Friday night, Saturday night. That's not where the parking problem is. The parking problem is further down by by the the bars. So. Yes, it does help, I suppose. But how many? Well, I'm glad you. But it just seems to me that. I'd rather make a decision, understanding the entirety of the problem than just.
But it just seems to me that I'd rather make a decision, understanding the entirety of the problem than just. A little soda straw look at things.
The the second.
And on the second. I I really need to understand the dollar amount related to the words a vast improvement or. What what's happening there with with the balance? It looks like a fair trade, it might be a great idea. But I'd really like to know what what those values are.
Other.
I I have a question for Luke. Luke, what would be the consequences of delaying this? Uh, motion tonight? In 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 order for you to do a comprehensive report on parking?
There are no consequences, Mayor and Council.
Well, I think there's a consequence. I think this was a very innovative solution to a long term problem that we've had in this town. Uh, for parking for to enable our pedestrians to get to our storefronts, to get to our restaurants. We've heard complaints ever since I've been on this council, uh, that there's not sufficient parking in this town. And I don't attribute additional parking as a negative. Uh, because it might help certain businesses, because first of all, I don't necessarily agree with that. I think people will utilize free parking in the middle of town and walk to wherever they want to walk. So I think that this was one really great idea to have a trade. That doesn't cost either party anything. In fact, this town is benefiting from it, I think more than Larson is. So, uh, I'm in favor of it, I think we should move forward, I think ideally, yes, additional research would be valuable. And that doesn't mean that we still can't do it, but I don't think we should hold up. Um, benefiting and and making parking more convenient in this town because we need further study. There's a problem, we have a solution, I think we should act on it.
I concur with the Vice Mayor.
I I I guess my fundamentally, business parking is for businesses to solve, it it makes absolutely no sense for me to. Have a business come in and then put in extra seating or expand business or whatever, require more parking in the town, come in and pay. Uh, resident money to fix their parking problem, they they have, I I the the. Example, I always give it on a five dollar beer, the town gets fifteen cents, so the 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 way to the benefit is far on the on the side of the. Uh, of the business, so. Solving individual. Businesses parking problems is not on my agenda. General parking, where it benefits a broad section of the town, or we can use it for events. It is something I have interested like this, I think this is uh, not specific to any one location, but it's uh, it serves. Quite an area through there Kiwanis, so across the street, I I don't know if you've thought about how we're gonna. Get across the street to businesses and things, that's another issue. Uh, is the safety aspect, so I'm worried about the comprehensiveness of this solution, it doesn't cover economics. It doesn't identify what the costs are as far as property taxes. And I I share the concern that it's not a comprehensive systematic. Discussion of the of the town parking in general. Uh, you're gonna town core plan, aren't you? Luke, is 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 that is parking a part of that?
Mary, yes, it is.
When is that going to be done?
Uh, the Planning Commission will begin work on that very soon.
Summer?
Yes, sir.
From now, two years?
Yes, sir, yeah, we're actually having a workshop tomorrow to to discuss that that very topic as well as some other scheduling. Uh, things coming up, so yes.
Okay. It it this. You can I I hate to do this, but if. Uh, there's not a lot of potential for parking in town, is that correct?
Mary, yes, that that is very correct.
That that's my observation, I probably agrees to yours.
Correct, the uh, the the really the goal of this and and Councilmember McGuire asked, what are the consequences if if we hold off on doing this? Um, really, the reason why it's on your agenda tonight is there is some money that we have in this fiscal year budget that terminates at the end of June. That we could put towards acquiring parking bumpers, um, looking at. A a surface for that, if we decide not to surface it at all, that's an option as well. Um, but the goal was to really do this and implement the parking area this summer. Um, before October, November. Uh, before those things start, before the schedule starts to come back to us with with our out of town guests, so that was really the. The goal of it coming before you this evening.
May I make one last comment?
Well, let me just finish this, the the, I I I really admire the fact that. I mean, we've done this with the Foothills Food Bank, we found innovative ways to do things there, we were doing, we're. This is a piece of property that we control that is pretty useless, given the floodplain problems. And it does, uh, it is a step forward, it's not a comprehensive step, and we don't know the scope of the comprehensive problem. But uh, it is, it is a would would appear to be a a a step forward. And I think I made perfectly clear, I I really do not like to see projects come forward that have economic consequences that. Are subjective and qual- qualitative rather than quantitative. Um, and this this qualifies for that criticism.
The last comment that I'd like to make is, I see this um, project. As economic development, uh, which this town does not do much of, we don't have a person on staff. Uh, to help this town sustain itself financially, uh, I think by adding additional parking spaces. We are contributing to the financial viability of this town and its core businesses. Uh, which is our job on this council, uh, you know, we are here to sustain, to financially sustain this town. And I think that this is one way to do it without it costing us a whole lot of money.
I have a comment. This may well be a great idea, we, I I, my perception is that we need parking downtown. But. Um, my perception is also that I'd like to understand what it costs. And I'd like to not just have to guess at that, so. I I don't know if the motion has a time, you know, a timeframe on it, but I would just. I would just love to know. What Larson's gonna spend in the creek and what we're gonna have to spend. For this, for this parking spot, so we have complete information here, this is gonna cost us this much or that much. That doesn't seem like that to.
I do have one other question, Luke, did you? Did you uh, go out with a request for proposal, asking if there were any other pieces of open property that could be used for this? Because my understanding is Arizona law, if you're gonna, if you're gonna uh, create some kind of. Thing. Whether it's leased or bought, you should go out and ask the rest of the community if they have space available that they might wanna wanna use instead of this. So I I would like, at least, are we in compliance with Arizona law there?
Yes, we are, the town attorney was involved in this whole process going through this. So there there were no procurement requirements because it's a lease, it's not a trade of land uh, through deed. We're we're in good standing.
Don't we still have to have an assessment of property values?
No, we do not.
You know, it's member McGuire.
I think looking at this comprehensively, the way that. Councilman Rhodes has suggested is a very good idea, but probably that needs to be incorporated into the town core plan. That is a large, uh, will be a relatively large document, it'd be very important. I'm very comfortable with moving forward on this tonight, and I feel that that probably can be incorporated into the town core plan, but I see that. I don't see the point in delaying what we're doing tonight, I think it's a very creative solution, and I'm. Confident that uh, this would not be a problem with the town core plan. But I don't want to hold it up until we've got a a document that that could very well take years.
Uh, Mister Mayor, um, I don't want to delay or suggest a delay at this point. But I would like, in exchange for supporting this request, I would like a firm commitment. Of a map and inventory for the residents of the community of the commercial corridor for existing parking. The idea of the occupancy is interesting, but. We rarely get, without that being a criticism, the type of documentation that we request. Sometimes based on resources, sometimes based on prioritization. I think if we good faith support this, that that's fair exchange is to have the town come back to the council within thirty or sixty days. With a map of the commercial corridor and a comparison of what's considered public parking, private parking. And then we know how to build from there. Uh, I just don't want to give a blank approval to a parcel that was done ex parte and not get something in exchange, I just think that information would be relevant. To the people who have lived here for a number of years, everybody knows the locations of places that got building permits and extending permits and rebuilding permits. Without complying with parking, now let's get an inventory of that so we can address it. One reason being that in the future, the town may want to take a look at bonding for public parking. Whether it's partially below ground or above ground or combined with market space or whatever. But we'll never know how much we have and how much we need if we don't get a report. And I just think that it's a fair exchange to support this, if it's so unique and the timing is important, to have a commitment from the town staff. That we get some type of parking inventory, that's my suggestion.
Okay.
Mayor, we actually have a motion, a second on the floor that would probably need to.
We're still in discussion, yeah.
Well, we. We have discussion on that motion, are we in discussion on the actually agendized item?
Well. We do have a motion, we had, and it consists of two parts, one is a motion to table. And the other part is a motion to get information back on the overall situation with the parking set. I'd like counsel to think about if, whether this pass, if this passes, we don't think about anything, if it doesn't pass. Then we might be thinking about another motion that uh, that has to direct staff to do some things. So uh, is there any more discussion on?
I'm willing to withdraw the first portion of the motion that we table this. But I do want the staff to come back in at a certain point in time and identify the other four pieces. And whether that's three months from now or one month from now, that's really your choice, Mister Mayor. But I want the answer to those four questions.
Okay, so are you going to?
I will, I will.
Amend your motion?
I will amend the motion, take off the tabling of. I will amend the motion to read. I move that we. Conduct again, I move that we gain a better understanding, the details of parking required within the town core. And then the remainder of the motion would be, so I I will remove the words table the proposed resolution R twenty twenty three dash ten. Regarding parking until we can.
Hey, we had the second down here, do you agree with that? Okay, so we're we're now uh, voting on the amended motion unless there's another comment? Uh, all those in favor of the amended motion, say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
We still have to vote on.
Yeah. Yeah, so so now we're at the main question, which is here, which is to approve or disapprove this this contract.
Mister Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I don't have answers to all of your questions about, but I thought for the record, I should let you know that according to the town engineer. That the cost for the um, double chip seal on approximately one acre runs about eight thousand dollars. And that their staff, the public works staff can assist with clearing the property. And some of the salvage, they simply can't do the large trees, that would have to be. Contracted out. Um, and then added with the the parking bumpers, and then they can also in um, in house by public works can stripe. The um, the chip seal once that's down. So we're talking about answering a question yet on the property tax and the cost for the large item salvage.
You're also gonna have to cut the curves, correct? And create them flat?
No.
There are no curves there?
Uh, the uh, the median configuration is acceptable for ingress and egress there, all all um. All motion.
I'm talking about. You have a curb next to the street, correct?
Is there curb and gutter at that location?
You have to curb, you have a couple of curbs also.
Correct. That's, that's why the um. Cool, and having a discussion with Kiwanis would be valuable also. Before doing those improvements to see if we can share access through their existing. But that is a potential, yes, Councilman Rose.
Mayor, I guess my my concern is is the is the property tax issue, do we know how much those the the taxes are on that one acre and are we gonna?
If only the owner were here to to um, elaborate on that.
Basically, I mean, I I know what I know what kites were on the twenty, they were about forty thousand bucks a year. So I'm wondering. What we're signing up for as far as, he's gonna have five acres down there without a property tax, where we're gonna have one acre with the property tax, I kinda. Kinda got a question about that 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 gives me an uneasy feeling.
Yeah, we're providing a.
Looky there.
So Council and Mayor, um, the approximate taxes on that one, I'm sorry, Mike Lars. And I'm the one doing the. Families. Um, the approximate taxes on that property, forty five hundred dollars to five thousand dollars a year on that one. It's not me, not me this time anyways.
Mayor, could I could I make a motion to table while the uh, staff works out with the uh, with them on that uh, that issue?
Uh, you you wanna make a motion to table this until?
Until they till they can get some, come to a resolution on forty five hundred to five thousand bucks a year, yeah.
You can make.
Well, I just made it.
Is is there a second on that motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose? Seven zero motion tape, the items table until we get the answers.
Could I ask a question, how soon can you get back to us with the answers that we asked?
You're uh, asking for a full parking inventory of the town or?
No, just this.
Oh, just on the on the tax, on the property tax? Very soon, a a week, two tops? Then if we need to go back uh, with with our uh, council and. Uh, examine modifying the the draft leases, we will do so.
Well, you 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 heard the comments here, I I I just asked that you comprehensively look at this. Not not the whole world, but as far as the the economics on on it are concerned. Uh, and and also the the scope, I I this seems to have a lot of ability to uh, have cooperation with Kiwanis, yeah. Okay.
Thanks, Luke.
We're now at item number six, council discussion possible of the adoption of the town of K Creek fiscal year twenty twenty three dash twenty twenty four. Attendant budget in the amount of fifty six billion, five hundred fifty five thousand, nine hundred sixty one dollars. Adoption of the tentative budget caps of the total expenditures of fiscal year twenty twenty three dash twenty four budget. Following the approval of the tentative budget, expenditures can be moved within the budget or reduced. But the overall total expenditures cannot be increased. Then by the town manager and financial director.
Do we have a? And have the AV person fix the mic, because mine is going crazy here.
Who do you want to hear from you?
Okay, let's 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 take a five minute break then. Re re convene. Okay, the council meeting is back in session, and we are on item number six, approval of the uh. And possible adoption of the town of K Creek fiscal year tentative budget.
Mayor, members of council. Um, before Mitzi gets into her presentation, she's got a slide presentation with. Specific referencing specific pages in the budget to give you an overall and explanation. I just wanted to address the last issue, I sent you. Uh, an email last Thursday, uh, late afternoon. Um, there were some questions about the Tally Ho tandem. Drainage road project. Um drainage road project as well as the medians and some questions. Um, and moving money around and we um. Gave you some details in that memo that was sent to council. But at the very end in the summary, um, we were recommending at this point in the budget process that. Due to several unknown factors in the process of both of those projects. That um you leave the budget estimates as is, and as you know, the budget is simply a plan. It doesn't mean that every dollar in the the plan is going to be spent or it has the authority to be spent. The projects that um require design and bidding and construction must come back to council. For approval first before those funds are expended for both of those projects. And uh, for example, in the the tally ho tandem area. Um, we have a drainage study out that won't be uh completed till the end of this fiscal year. And so we have budgeted for sort of the worst case scenario in terms of drainage. Because we don't know what the flows are going to show and what the cost for the drainage will be. Um, and the same with the median project. We have money in for the design, but that design has to come to the council. Um, through proposal or qualifications from um landscape designers. And the council will have the opportunity to look at their conceptual designs and move forward. With um the. Landscape design company that best fits what you are looking for, for them to complete the full design. And that will take time and the design then sort of dictates uh what. The vegetation is and the costs et cetera. And the the medians are not, uh, we do not intend to add water. To the medians themselves. Uh, the town will water all of the plants and that also um they are required to file. Follow our plant um native plant list. And so all of that in the proposal will go out and come back to council, you will approve that. And then that comes back for a final design and then you go out for construction. So there's a process that takes place and until you 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 know more, you won't know the costs um. For the actual construction. If you don't um. Spend the funds in this fiscal year, those funds roll into the fund balance at the end of the fiscal year. And become part of the available revenue to budget for any remaining construction costs for either of those projects. In the next fiscal year. So that is why at this time we're saying let let's leave the funds as is, move through the pro- projects. Neither of those projects will be one hundred percent complete in this fiscal year, simply due to the process of doing the. Quotes, um, getting proposals for the design, having the design done, having it approved by council. And then getting the bid uh for construction put together and out and and back. There you will definitely get to a construction phase, but it it's not necessarily one hundred percent. So we're just recommending that you keep the funds as is in the budget.
I have a question on the medians.
Yes, sir. Mayor, uh.
Why can't we, as as far as I can tell, we have about three and a half miles worth of medians, correct?
That's correct. We would give them the square footage, yes.
So why couldn't we do planning for a quarter mile segment? And then just replicate that on down the line, make whatever switches or changes we need with trees that are already extent. And add a swallow and an ironwood to each quarter mile segment. Why can't we do something simple like that?
Uh, mayor, members of council, council member, um, that would design would be up then to the council. Uh, to decide to go that way. There's a little bit more to it. Those medians have been sprayed for weeds for many, many years. And we would have to take out the soils and put that in. And I mean, there's more to the construction than that, and we do not intend to put. Uh, any kind of sprinkler system in there, we would have to be watering that. And we would anticipate that that would come from a landscape. Um, design company to come up with the appropriate. Native plants to put in there. We do have some plants we could move, but we we don't have. The exact plan and and that could be part of your decision when you get the qualified um. Vendors before you to lay out the plan.
So are we gonna go with a totally open competition when we do this or are we just gonna go to three people we select?
Mayor, uh, council member, we typically put out requests for qualifications. And they would come in, they would submit, you have a period of time for them to submit their qualifications. And um in this type of uh project, they typically submit uh concept. Plans and they can have options that would be submitted and presented to the council and the council. Can um then choose what is appropriate for the median.
So. It goes out to everyone to bid on, correct? Or you're selecting.
Qualifications are open to everyone.
Okay, how do we publicize that?
In the local newspaper and we're required to to publish that. We put it on our website. That's a procurement process we follow.
Mitzi, you have a presentation to make.
Yes. Mayor and council, I will be presenting to you the highlights from the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four tentative budget. I have a slide presentation on your screens um for you to um also follow along. I've included budget page numbers as well as the council packet page number. Um, on several of the slides as well for um easy reference if um you'd like to follow along in your um. Your book. I'm going to start uh with. Uh, the revenues that have been identified in the tentative budget. For fiscal year twenty twenty-four, thirty-one percent of the revenues are um coming from the general fund. Fifty-eight percent from the utility funds and eleven percent are from the uh special revenue funds. This slide um breaks down the revenues uh by fund in dollars, the total revenues. And use of fund balances presented for fiscal year twenty-four tentative budget in total are um at the bottom there in green of fifty-six million. Five hundred and fifty-five dollars or five hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars. The general fund revenues account for seventeen million, three thirty-four, seven ninety-four. Of which three million, five eighty-one, two twenty-four is being used from fund balance. The special revenue funds are six million, four hundred and eighty-four thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight. Capital projects are twenty thousand, eight oh nine and enterprise funds of thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred. Thirty-two million, seven hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred dollars. The fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four total expenditure budget is proposed at the same. Fifty-six million, five hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars. Moving from right to left on this uh chart. It shows on the right hand side that the total expenditure amount. Of thirty-four million, four twenty-seven, four thirty-one is for the enterprise funds. Including wastewater, cave creek water, desert hills water. And also includes the thirteen million, one ninety, one hundred and ninety thousand for the WIFA loan fund related to the uh Phoenix interconnect project. Uh, the next uh column over is the capital project funds, which includes the remaining development impact fees. Which were not collected, which are not collected any longer and are budgeted to be spent. Um, in the upcoming fiscal year twenty twenty-four and the amount of twelve thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars. Which when spent will close um this fund. The special revenue funds are budgeted for four million, seven hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and four dollars. And represent our herf spur cross parks and trails, open space acquisition and grant funds. These funds can only be used for specific purposes and not for general government expenditures. Um, and then over um to the left is the uh general fund and what is left and has a proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Of seventeen million, three eighty-nine, six hundred and sixty dollars. The um slide that's on your screen now is the general fund summary. And uh it shows the income and outflows of this fund. This can be found on page forty-four of the budget or page one fifty-four of your council packet. The general fund has proposed operating revenues of eleven million, four oh nine, nine twenty-two. Proposed operating expenditures of ten million, five hundred and sixty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars. A transfer in from spur cross of nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight seventy-seven. And uh net operations ending in the black of a million, seven hundred and seventy-one thousand, five hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Um, this is, this shows that the town is sufficiently covering its operating uh position. This is the second half of the general fund summary. I just couldn't fit it on one slide, but um the. A million, one seven seven. One, five thirty-nine is shown up there in the upper right hand corner in green. That's the total from above. From um this amount, we have one-time construction sales tax monies coming in and one-time general fund capital project expenditures coming out. As well as our transfers out and contingency um showing uh one-time uses of five million. Three hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-three dollars. With these one-time capital expenditures for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. The general fund will be using existing fund balance of three million, five eighty-one, two twenty-four. And the general fund is proposed to end the year with an unassigned fund balance of twenty-two million, eight twenty-eight, five fifty-seven. Um, I'm gonna quickly flip um to the next slide. The um major general fund capital initiatives that um have been included as part of the general fund for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Budget include um the street improvement projects. Um, which also includes the town core pedestrian safety projects and also the uh median enhancements. And um as well as street improvement projects, meaning catching up on um our. Um, road maintenance projects that we um have out there. As well as uh fire station renovation and improvements and trail projects, including the town core uh pathways. Those general fund capital initiatives that I just went for and back to the original slide here. But I just wanted to point out that in the one-time sources and uses usage section there, that that capital expenditure line. Um, to the very right of the five million, six oh five. Those uh major capital initiatives um are included as part of that. Funding that we're the one-time funding that we're spending on uh those capital projects in particular. Um, and 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 making those expenses, it's requiring us then to um. Use part of our fund balance that we have existing or our savings account, if you will, of the three million, five eighty-one, two twenty-four. Um. I just also want to point out that after using that um portion of our savings account or existing fund balance. The town is still in a healthy and uh good financial shape with our unassigned fund balance being. Twenty-two million, eight twenty-eight, five fifty-seven. So we'll move um from the general fund um into uh the fund summaries next for for um, sorry, the enterprise funds. And uh the first up is the wastewater fund. Uh, which is shown on page uh ninety-five of the budget or page two oh five of the council packet. The proposed revenues show um three million, four sixty-six, oh eighty-eight. And um include for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, the increased sewer rates um that council had adopted. Uh, in December of last year. The operating revenues are three million, four fifty-five, oh ninety-nine and show a um positive operating position of twenty thousand, nine hundred and eighty-nine dollars. The one-time transfer in from the general fund to subsidize debt service until um the debt service goes down. Less the one-time capital expenditures leaves the wastewater fund um at a net zero balance. Uh, the next slide here is uh kit the for the cave creek water fund that's shown on on budget page ninety-eight or page two oh eight of the council packet. It has uh proposed revenues of six million, four sixty-one, one twenty-two. And um also includes the increased water rates. Um, the operating expenditures are five million, eight hundred and fourteen thousand, oh fifty-five. Leaving uh the net operations of the fund in the black, six hundred and forty-seven thousand, sixty-seven dollars. Accounting for one-time grant proceeds and one-time capital outlay for projects, the net result for cave creek water is in the red. Um, two million, one hundred and forty thousand, three hundred and ninety uh dollars. This um deficit is covered by the positive fund balance that rolled forward from um the previous year. Which leaves uh cave creek water with a fund balance to cover its uh debt service uh reserve requirement. The desert hills water fund is shown on uh page one oh one or page two eleven of the council packet. It has a, it has proposed operating revenues, including the increased water rates of four million, four fifty-eight, five hundred. And operating expenditures of three million, five seventy-seven, one sixty-two. Leaving an operating position in the black of eight hundred and eighty-one thousand, three thirty-eight. Accounting for one-time capital expenditures and a fun contingency, desert hills has a net result of zero. And fund balance sufficient to cover its debt service reserve requirement. The next slide um I wanted to show was a debt overview of um. What we've got outstanding uh for debt, where we started and where we currently are for uh the debt related to our utility funds. Um, they started uh with an original loan debt amount of about sixty-six million, seven hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. This amount has been reduced through debt service payments and refinancing arrangements. Uh, and the debt that we have outstanding after making our upcoming seven one twenty twenty-three um debt service payments will be twenty million, nine. Hundred and eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars. Um, I just wanted to point that out as well because the utility funds have made um great progress in reducing. Their financial uh debt obligations today. Uh, that is my financial presentation of the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty or twenty-three, twenty-four tentative budget. As a recap, the tentative budget caps the total expenditures. So there's a motion in front of council tonight to adopt the tentative budget for the town of Cave Creek for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. In the amount of fifty-six million, five hundred and fifty-five dollars, nine, five hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-one dollars. Um, the next steps after adoption of the tentative budget will be a public hearing. And adoption of the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four final budget. And that will take place on Monday, uh June fifth. During this meeting, council will receive the um. Final budget resolution that will come before you um along with the official auditor general budget form. Um, at the next uh council meeting. Oh, I um am happy to answer any questions you all might have.
Yeah, me too. Go ahead.
Okay, I'll start. I just have, I I think a minor. Yeah. Question on page fourteen in your organizational chart. I don't see um. An area that identifies communications. Under, I know it's under administrative, I know it's under carries area. Under, I know it's under administrative. I know it's under Carrie's area. I think it's important that we identify that we have a position in that area. I think it. Obviously gives some respect to that position, but not only that, I think it's important for people to see. That we have a communications specialist who produces information. Who relays information, who conveys information and also takes questions from the public. So Carrie, if you wouldn't mind, I would like to see that included. In the org chart, wherever you want to include it, perhaps human resources and communications. Secondly. I also see under development services, economic development. And so I would like to know if I was erroneous in a previous statement that I made about us not having. A staff person responsible for economic development in town, or how do you define what we do in economic development? Mayor Vice Mayor, the economic development is under is in the development services department. It has always been in that department and has. Been. When when we had two separate departments, it was under the planning director of the planning department. When we rolled up the two departments, it continues to be in that budget. It's just called development services, but it's in that section of the overall department. But we don't have one person who's responsible for that. Uh, no, but the director was and and continues to be. In charge of those activities. Okay, very good. Thank you.
I have two comments. This budget has two characteristics. First is that it describes the budget elements deemed essential by staff. I get that. It's important to keep the ship afloat. Expenditures may be basic to the operation of the town. And some may not be, but might be preferred by the staff. The council's priority discussion about these is missing. The second characteristic of this budget draft is that it's not based on the strategic plan. And even more importantly, it's not based on the priorities of the council because we didn't take the time to prioritize a strategic plan. Elements. The mayor and the members of this council have asked for time to prioritize these expenditures. But those requests have been glossed over in favor of a deadline to get this budget done. I understand that. Assurances that prioritization will happen have produced no action toward that goal. When is that going to happen? When will we have time to look at where we're going with the budget? Or is this the done deal, which is how it seems?
In terms of the strategic plan, I've had those conversations with the mayor and it's fitting that into. All of the meetings that we're having. I mean, that it's having a discussion with council. Along with all the other activities of the meetings that we're having. Part of that is your, the meeting that is scheduled between the council and the planning commission. To work out your projects, but we've had discussions about trying to schedule that on an agenda.
So the strategic plan is supposed to be where the budget is built, correct? Supposed to be built off the strategic plan?
Some of it, yes, some of the priorities, but not all of it. Some operating projects and ongoing projects that have carried over. From the year from several years, I mean, especially in utilities, there's a lot of projects going on.
Yeah, I'm I'm not too concerned about the utilities piece. That's kind of a self operating. Self operating piece, just simply because we now have it correct. And I do appreciate the previous councils finally getting it to the point where it's self sustained. But the rest of the budget really should be based on the strategic plan. And it seems to me that that when we went out and had the offsite at that strategic plan. Strategic planning session, we were expecting something back within a month and wanted to take almost four months before we finally got it. I think. It it makes me nervous about approving a budget that goes from forty million last year or forty million and some change last year. To fifty six million this year. And I get that a large part of it's on the on the 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 water. And sewer, but at the same time, I mean, you're you're talking about more than ten thousand dollars per person in this town. That's what we're gonna spend. I mean, that's a lot of money. I mean, we're we're talking about. A town of fifty five hundred having a fifty six million dollar budget. So I I have some concerns. I have. I have a specific concern in that the way the process should have worked for everything with the exception of utilities. Is it should have gone to the strategic plan and we should have tied the strategic, we should have tied. Everything that we did in the budget back to the strategic plan. We haven't done that. And so I'm concerned about that.
Mr. Chairman, I think you need a hundred thousand, not ten thousand. Council member Rose.
Oh, sorry.
I wanted to run a flag up the flagpole, so I'm gonna be lobbying each of you. In an effort to make sure we're fully funded on the medians. Because when you went to the numbers earlier on improvements to the town for pedestrian safety and so forth. Each one of those raised intersections, if I'm correct from the testimony from Hal in the past, I think it was a hundred thousand dollars per. Intersection raised platform. Could we, so this is the trial balloon. Can we just bump the gateway? Trailhead, which serves people that do not live in the community back a year. And take the monies that are in the line item for that. And add it to the next fiscal year's budget for medians and anything related to the downtown commercial core. You don't need to react. I'm just, because we're not later in the process. I just thought I'd raise that issue again this evening. Because the amount of money that we're looking at for the medians is not terribly impressive or significant to do probably the miles. Of work that needs to be done. And if we're really going to be spending a hundred grand to raise an intersection. Two or three of those. Can we not postpone the gateway trailhead, which is for horse trailer parking for people outside the community? And put our money where our business is, which is in the downtown commercial quarter.
Well, I I'm not sure about the trailhead, but I don't think the trailheads or any other single project is an issue. We have enough money in this budget to do. What we need to do, but we we just don't know the scope yet on on what the meetings are going to be. There's a lot of. I have some severe concerns myself about the the amount of square footage and rain gathering and. I mean, we're gonna need, we can't engineer this from council. We cannot engineer the. The roads and the medians from here, that is the job that that staff is to do. We can supervise that. We can set scopes and. And approve that, but we need to wait until we get the information back. We don't have it yet. And that's, that's, that's required.
Mr. Chairman, I don't disagree with that. I'm just saying that the gateway trailhead is not a priority of the council that I've heard. Discussed up here since the budget process.
I thought that was being, uh, was a grant.
Four hundred and thirty five thousand or four sixty five out of town funds is.
My understanding is that's covered. The funding for that would come from grants and if we didn't have a grant, we weren't going to do it if, am I mistaken?
Yeah, the monies that were talked about with REI and the state land department did not match what the town's asking for from taxpayer funds for that.
Okay, I'm confused about state lands being in this now.
No, the state land department grant that they are.
Oh, oh, I I see.
We had testimony before.
Four hundred, four hundred and ninety thousand is.
So here we are prioritizing.
Just a hundred thousand dollars.
Well, let's let's stick with the issue on the table before we start another issue. So let's get this question answered.
Okay. The capital projects, first of all, are prioritized in the CIP. And the CIP did come to council for that year. So year one, there's a hundred thousand for the gateway. Project and seventy thousand of that is grants. So it's thirty thousand dollars of funding. From the general fund.
Mr. Chairman, Carrie, if I could. In the capital improvement project budget, what is that figure representative of?
It is year fis- fiscal year twenty four budget.
So are we suggesting that we spend that amount on the gateway project, knowing that we have some matching grants coming in for?
We're suggesting if we get a grant and we don't have a grant at this time, that if we get a grant. For seventy thousand dollars, because there's a matching portion that the town would spend thirty thousand dollars. If we don't get a grant, we wouldn't do that at all.
And I'm sorry to be belabor this, Mr. Chairman and Carrie, what is that number then representative of? Is that not a proposed expenditure?
Count mayor and councilman, are you referring to the four hundred and seventy five?
Yes.
That's the total fiscal year twenty four budget for trails in total. So that also includes two hundred thousand in their town core pathways. The gateway trailhead and the Surrey Drive pedestrian crossing.
Which also would not be funded unless we received a grant.
No, I understand that. How much are we proposing to spend on the gateway trailhead? Not counting the potential for grant money.
Thirty thousand dollars.
The total proposed expenditure for all activities under that category?
The four seventy five is the total for trails in total.
Okay, and can you just break that down one more time for me? Now I'm sorry to be belaboring this. I'm just trying to understand it.
No worries. So the town core pathways are two hundred thousand.
Let me just stop you again. Is that for acquisition or actual development?
Okay, it's first of all, it's in your packet on page one twelve. And at the top. The. The what for the great gateway trailhead? Is it for what acquisition?
Never mind. I I was asking a question for the money for the trails in the commercial corridor. Is that money to purchase the actual right of way or is that the development to create the trails?
Yes, we had discussion at the work session and it was two hundred thousand. To work with the property owners to get the easement so that we could construct the pathways.
Okay, thank you.
We weren't going to, we don't want to acquire them other ways. We'd prefer to work with them and.
That's between the roadhouse and by the way.
There's about three different areas, but it's on the north side on the east side of town.
I mean, it's between roughly those two.
Roughly that, yes.
The the one thing I, we we are not approving those expenditures unless it's within the town manager's. Authority, which is, I think, twenty five thousand.
That's correct.
So so we're gonna never bite at all these. If if anyone in council does not like one of these projects, we can vote against it. It doesn't happen. So we, I mean, we're not authorizing any expenditures tonight other than what is for the, you know, the salaries of the staff and the. Normal operating system, but for the projects, they're all gonna come back here with in regard to our procurement procedures and approval proceedings. So you, we've got another bite at this apple.
Right.
And we have contingencies. If something comes up that is not in here, we can shift money over to it. We have a million, one point two million that's shown as an expenditure, but I don't know of any year we ever. Taken any money out of that contingency. So.
That's correct.
This is to meet the state requirements to get expenditure authority for all the things that we're doing.
Mr. Chairman, just in summary, what I'm attempting to do is to try to hire prioritize a project which the council supported. Just to see if there's any potential of coming up with some more money. As the medians in the downtown efforts are of a higher priority than some of the other projects that are outlined, so. Well, I, it was such a flag of the flagpole. If we don't. I mean, a hundred thousand dollars to raise a crosswalk three or four times through the town is a lot of money. That doesn't do much for beautification or popularity, for one thing.
Yeah, so it's, there's all that about that.
Carrie didn't answer my question, so I appreciate that.
Well. We're gonna need expert help on some of these things and and the medians are are one of, we need, we need professional design, professional. A procedure, how we're gonna handle these things, how much vegetation can they support, what we're gonna do with the dirt, where the plants are gonna come from. The the number of six hundred thousand dollars was shocking, we heard in total, which I would. Be extremely reluctant to spend that much, especially since we have other higher priorities. That is not. The the highest priority we that I have at least. So I I I think, you know, we beat this to death in my view. And we still have flexibility to do everything I've heard tonight. We still have flexibility to do in the future. But this gets us on the road and gets us starting doing stuff rather than beating them these numbers to death.
Although I I would like Carrie to respond to the criticism. That we haven't given enough attention or time to the strategic plan. And that items within this budget don't necessarily correspond with the strategic plan. I'd like your your opinion on that. And also. There are solutions to that going forward. I remember when I was working at a governmental organization. Every single project was tied to the strategic plan and it just in the in the brief. So there's ways to make it more. Obvious how it ties to the to the strategic plan, but. For for this purpose, what's what's your position on how well we. Are functioning within the strategic plan that we developed? Well, traditionally, when you have a change in council and we have. A a new mayor who was on the council, so you're carrying forward sort of some continuity or at least, you know, the. Corporate knowledge of where we came with the budgets in the previous strategic plan. But when you have new council members and the timing of. When we have to have elections now, because our elections didn't used to be in the fall. That was mandated by. The legislature. So we had. Council that used to come in the first Monday of June and you had. Six months in office to work on these things and get priorities in place before you were. Sitting down doing the strategic plan and getting. The CIP put together and having to put together a budget and there's. There are some new ideas and new things that have been put in in the strategic plan and some haven't been flushed out yet. But in terms of the budget, we've got the majority of the projects that would. Cost some money. There's plenty of money in this plan. It's only a plan. And you have all the flexibility. Throughout the next few meetings, when you, when you. Hear the projects in July from the engineer and the the town core safety and pedestrians and all of that to flush out. The direction you want to go and see what the recommendations are and the warrants. You have. Plenty of time to work with the planning commission and then come up with what ordinances you you may. Or may not want to focus on and changing and prioritize those as a council. And if you need, I know council member Alkemot was concerned about. Professional services, if we need a consultant, that can be worked out. We can move that money around. You can, you have all the authority to move your projects and money around, as the mayor said. So much of it is tied to the strategic plan. But there are details yet to work out as a new council and with staff and we can accommodate all of that. It's, this is not like, this gets approved and and there's, you know, it's a done deal and you can't do anything else. It it's always fluid and there are always new things that come up every year, some emergencies, some. Something that you have to do. And so we're spending money and time on those projects. And we have to shift them around in the strategic plan and in the budget. So we have to be flexible and all this can be worked out. Thank you, but I do think going forward that all of the projects that staff brings to us should identify which. Part of the strategic plan it applies to and correlates with. And sometimes it's more than one.
Absolutely.
Right, right. And ideally, yes, that would all be set and those projects would be identified and the little icons in the budget would. Line up in the budgets along with the strategic plan. And it was, it was a little better the last couple of years, but we'll get there. And it was, it was a little better the last couple of years, but we'll get there. It's just, you know.
I guess that was the point I'm trying to make, is that. The council needs to make a decision about which things are first at some rate. Depending on the staff's skill set, which is happily working just fine about the money. But I think that helps the staff as well to say, okay, I we know that this is one of the council's priorities, and that means it's at the top of the list.
That's true, and and as I said, things do change and new things come up, and so we also have communication with the council and say. Look, these are your priorities and this is what's on the plate, but now we have this other problem we have to deal with. What do you, how do you want to reprioritize, what comes off the plate or gets set aside for a few months while we work on this other thing? It's a fluid situation. All year long, every year, and and we can work through it all.
I I just. I just want to say about about the strategic plan, um, we we try to do the strategic plan while we were doing the budget at the same time, that doesn't work, we've. Talked previously about. Moving that back into the latter part of the year before, so we're not doing it, because we never got around to prioritize, it was always that meeting ended with. A bunch of stuff and it never was worked into a plan, it wasn't a plan, it was a bunch of brainstorms. And uh, we're gonna look to solve that this year um and get a more traditional. Uh, strategic planning consultant who can put this all together and get it prioritized, we walk out of there, we have this thing done.
In the fall.
So I don't think anybody is proud of 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 that, of the way the uh. The deliverable that came out of that strategic planning process, and we gotta do better, that's that that's my commitment, and I think a lot of people share that.
One last comment, I'm sorry, one last comment.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and and uh Mitzi, on one of your slides, which attributed. Many of our costs, which I think you led off with the medians and the pedestrian. What was not mentioned, which is a huge cost, is our fire, our ongoing expenses related to the fire department, and I think that. Did I miss that? Because I didn't see it on that slide.
Well, for those were the uh, the capital projects, so the fire station and all of that, but the operating that is.
I see, so that was the difference.
So that was, okay, because I I think that we need to remind uh our public. Of the ongoing expenditures to maintain our new fire department, and that is a large portion along with our our water department, uh, what. Beats up a lot of our funding.
So if there are no, are there any more questions? If not, we'll move to public comment.
First public comment, Evelyn Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor Vice Mayor. I wanted to uh commend you on maintaining the community grants within the budget. It does make a huge difference for your nonprofits and I wanted to commend you for that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mrs. Judge.
Next is Chantel Hanje.
Good evening, everyone. After discussion during the last town council meeting, necessary improvements on Tally Ho were headed in a positive direction. However, since then, other significant details that were omitted by town management during the last meeting have come to light. I also refuse to believe that a large sewer and hydrant plan was. Just completely forgotten about. Um, by by town management at the last meeting. Um, I also noticed that in the budget, there is nothing beyond fiscal year twenty twenty four in regards to tandem or tally hope. I would like to point out that contrary to. What the town manager made earlier, um, regardless of what a drainage study shows, these are pictures that the town actually has. That is water going down tandem and that is water right up into a house. There are more pictures like this as well, so for town management to say that they don't know about these drainage problems until we get a drainage study, that is absolutely not true. Having said that, since there is now no definitive plan for Tally Ho, my questions are as follows. One, what is the timeline and the overall plan for each stage of this road? Two, when will hydrants and sewer be completed on this road? And three, if chip sealing is not going to be done now or in the near future, as discussed, what is the date for chip sealing after all other improvements have been completed? I would like answers to these questions if possible, um, is this something that?
We 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 don't have those answers, Chantel, I mean, we we've got to do the study first with, starting with with the drainage, so you can ask the question, but. Uh, you're you're.
Let me remind the town, please, that town, that Tally Ho and tandem are the only two roads on Black Mountain that are not paved. Um, town management is obviously well aware of the issues on this road. In the past, when I have inquired why improvements have not been made on this road, I was told it was because the road was like this before the town was incorporated. That means that you've had thirty seven years to fix this road and the problems on it. Um, the town apparently feels that they are not truly liable for what happens on this road regarding residents' health, safety and property. I don't believe that that's the case, I think you are liable for what happens on that road, especially when it is caused by your lack of maintenance and your negligence and neglecting the road. Um, the water study and the drainage study the town management has brought up repeatedly, that was not done, and that was not begun. Until I was out there shoveling dirt on Valentine's Day of twenty twenty three, that is what brought that drainage study on, it's not because they did it because it was the right thing to do. I was once assured by um town council members that emergency assistance on this road is not hindered by the conditions of the road. Only then did I produce a video of a fire truck getting stuck at the top of the hill on this road. I had one specific council member come out to my home, he has made multiple comments to other residents on the road as well. And he told my husband that he believed that the road was unsafe even after repairs were made and it was maintained. After each rain, residents wait three to five days for repairs to take place. I have been told that our road does not get special treatment, we have very different di- different definitions, apparently, of what special treatment consists of. I have been told by town management that when people move here, they buy big trucks. That is totally unreasonable and not a realistic expectation for people with homes in this area. In the meantime, we are all breathing the dust from this road, it is unsealed GSA, I believe that contains silica dust. The road is not properly maintained as far as dust control, and there is nothing done to stabilize it. Each time it rains and a road is washed out, the town is diminishing all of our. Enjoyment of our home and the usage of our home, I will only speak for myself, I will not speak for other residents, but you've had complaints from more than twelve out of the twenty houses. Just on Tally Ho, not even tandem. I am confident that residents would rally for a common goal if they had to, even though many of them are elderly and they do have health conditions. Me personally, I want this resolved in a quick and thorough resolution, but I will tell you that I have reached out to media outlets and I will take this further if this road is not handled.
Thank you.
David Phelps.
Good evening, David Phelps, Cave Creek resident. So on in your packet, you will have the um. CIP budget, which clearly states that the gateway trailhead. Under the trails shows a four hundred and fifteen thousand dollar expenditure. Over three years. Now, I understand that staff would like you to think that we're gonna get some free money. But we're gonna have to match free money with real money, money collected through our sales tax system. I think it is atrocious that we're about to go invest, take the first bite. The first hundred thousand dollar bite in this budget, when we've got folks in her situation. It's just unconscionable. We can't find the money we need in this town to fix that for all those residents. I'd also like to refer you to page seventy nine and eighty in the budget that was in included. Because I'm having a disagreement in fact. For one of the council members, and I would like to know. If the half cent spur cross sales tax. Is in fact. Where the revenue comes from. Or the. Uh, water. You got so many accounts here for water, excuse me. Infrastructure fund. That would be a question, Mayor, for our financial, um, it's the, I'm sorry, it's the, I don't. So that we have a transfer out from the spur cross fund to the water infrastructure this year. It appears that we're in the eight hundred thousand plus range for that. Eight hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars, that money is actually. Generated from the half cent sales tax. Called the spur across fund this week. Am I right? Am I reading that right? Mayor, for your finance person, so I don't get you caught in it or somebody else.
Where where's the money come from?
The uh spur cross tax, the uh percent is set by ordinance, and the first part pays for all expenses related to spur cross. And then the first one hundred thousand after that goes into the trails fund. And then the remaining um portions are split fifty fifty between the general fund and the water infrastructure fund, which is set up by ordinance.
We agree now?
I've seen that ordinance, it was done in twenty seventeen. By this council.
I agree with you, and I've asked every single meeting here to reinstate the open space fund. And quit taking money out of the general fund to subsidize your water projects. You've got plenty of money you can borrow, you've got plenty of rate payers willing to pay whatever you want us to pay to to provide us water. Has anybody been calling here and saying, I can't afford my water bill? No. We don't get that, luckily. Uh, I've got thirty seven seconds left. I'm gonna say that the uh.
Wrap wrap your comments up.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, I'd like to know the cost in the budget for the one hundred tons of collection for the green waste days. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Phelps.
That finishes public comment for this item, Mayor.
Okay, so we have uh finished public comments, so um. We're at the point for a motion, is there a motion to approve the uh? The budget for this year.
I can do that. Wow, motion to adopt the town of Cave Creek fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, ten to budget in in uh. In the amount of fifty six million, five hundred fifty five dollars. And five hundred fifty five thousand and nine hundred and sixty one dollars, that's a hard number to say.
They're all hard to say. Second. Mr. Bunch, you had the. Motion comment?
Yeah, you know, I mean, one of the, one of the things you need to look at is is we do a budget every year and it's and it's been pretty big for lots of times, but if you compare that against the uh. The CAFRA that we get in December, which shows what we actually spent, it's usually much less than that, because there are. Things that we have to make provisions for, like grants that may not come through and all kinds of stuff, it's a huge number. Uh, it's not necessarily uh an accurate number for what we're actually going to do as as um as seen in the in the previous history. Uh, so I, well, it's it's kind of a, kind of, I remember the first year that we had one that was forty two million, I was like, oh my God, what are we doing? Uh, but uh, this is how we gotta do business.
Second.
Yeah, that's, this is put a cap, I mean, you have to make sure that the cap that we put on our spending covers what we need to spend. I don't think it's an unreasonable uh look at the budget, uh, and I agree with what uh former mayor Bunch is saying.
Other comments from council.
I just think that we're gonna spend that kind of money, we need to make sure that we're accommodating, you know, the urgent needs of health um and safety issues and. Sounds to me like Tally Ho and tandem are a health and safety issue that needs to be addressed now.
I I thought those were being addressed, I thought you were taking a lead on that, actually.
I was, but I was told that we can't pave the road because we've got to put fire hydrants in and we've got to put um other things, so we're talking about. Point four miles of roadway, how much is point four miles of roadway chip seal?
The drainage improvements, which have to go in first, are gonna be about a hundred and thirty thousand for the two roads, with about a hundred and thirty thousand in chip sealing for the two roads uh after they're done.
So are we gonna chip seal it when it's done, or are we gonna wait until the fire hydrants and?
Currently, in the budget that we've put forth, there's money to chip seal it this year.
Okay, thank you, that's different than what I was told earlier, but that.
But that's, the money is in there, so if the council decides they want to do it.
No, perfect, perfect, that's exactly what I was looking for, thank you.
All right, uh, comments down this end. I have a few comments, um. Just in general, um, this town has had some extraordinary external things thrown at us. We have some internal improvements and we have some absolutely blockbuster projects that are gonna address problems that have. Plagued this town for a long time, let me just say that we had a fire. And we have uh put in fire protection with no new taxes. Um, that's in this budget, not only operating cost, but the cost of the fire department, the fire engines and all the other things. Um, we had the loss of almost twenty percent of our water customers in the Cave Creek system, and uh.
Results of the vote, carefree.
And the uh. Uh, that came out, we had to cover that in the water rates, um, we had a number of subsidies between departments and all over the place, where general fund and other places were. Uh, subsidizing uh even places outside of town, that has all been corrected. Um, and in doing so, we've not only covering these major things have been thrown at us, but we've got some dynamite projects that are going to. Enhance this town, one, and probably the most important is. Uh, the safety issues with pedestrian safety, we are funding pedestrian safety, it's a priority, and it's being done this year, it could have been done a long time ago, but we got it done this year. The second thing is the Phoenix interconnect is on the budget. Uh, that gives us water reliability instead of having. Twenty, thirty, forty, fifty single points of failure on that cap line, we will have a backup supply of water. The roads, the roads are falling in disrepair, instead of putting five hundred thousand bucks a year into roads or putting two million into roads this year. So this budget addresses the needs of this town at the very basic level of safety, of of fire. Covering the the water and the sewer and the things that this town has to do in order for this to stay a town, so I I'm I'm pleased with this budget. Um, but I also like to point out that um. Uh, that number fifty six million sounds pretty high, but the other one sounded high too. And I want to point out that in uh twenty one, twenty two, that we put four million dollars in the bank, we were four million to the positive. Uh, and this year, we're estimating right now that we're gonna head, come in five million dollars better than the budget, we showed a deficit deficit for this year's budget, we're gonna come in five million dollars. Better than that and put almost three million dollars into the bank. This year, we're talking about taking some money out of the bank to invest in the infrastructure in this town like roads, roads is the very biggest one. Um, in the general fund, and then, of course, we have the interconnect and the and the water project, so this is a budget that meets the town's needs, now we get all into all the little projects and things like that, we're down the weeds. It seems to me, um. And um. The appropriate time for that is when these things come up, as long as we have the money in there to be able to operate and to do the things that this town needs to be, needs to be done. And I think it's gonna be a good budget, I'm uh, I'm I'm pleased with this, I'm not pleased with the way the strategic plan folded in, it's kind of messy. Uh, but the result is something that the town can be proud of, and it's gonna meet the town's needs, if even if the I's and T's were not uh taken care of, as we would like to have had them done. With that, I think that's all the comments, we got the public comment in, so I guess.
Have we had a motion, man?
We had the motion, I'll bring it out, I think. Uh, is this a uh roll call?
This fifty three million dollars. All right, Councilmember Augerton. Councilmember Bunch.
Yes.
Councilmember Elkema.
No.
Councilmember McGuire.
Yes.
Councilmember Rhodes.
No.
Vice Mayor Roy.
Yes.
Mayor Morris.
Yes, motion passes four, three budgets adopted. So we're on to the next item, which is the presentation quarterly utilities report.
Yeah.
This this is a matter of information. I see that that carefree. And turn down the. The automatic aids.
And it looks like Tempe the coyotes are going down.
Against. Eighty percent against in carefree.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Just wait for our presentation load, but. What they want to point out is I like to actually thank my staff for the last several months. You know, this is a quarterly report, a little out of sequence in getting this to you, but we've actually had some recent turnover in staff. So my I I want to thank the staff that stayed with the town. And actually are providing your utility services on a twenty four seven basis to make sure that their customers are receiving the best service they can. So we've had our challenges with people leaving the city. We've actually had some challenges with some people who we offered positions to, and then they rescinded at the last minute. So looking at my peers in the industry, we're all going through this right now. So it's pretty stressful right now trying to make sure that we have it. So again, I want to just put the kudos out to all the staff members in utilities right now, from the office staff to the the building staff to again, the field staff to make sure. So I I'm just here presenting to you, but they're the ones actually doing the work, so. So I'm gonna be a little more judicious with time today and just, you know, there's a lot in the a lot of information in the slides. And you just couldn't go to a couple summaries, but if you want me to stop at anyone specific, I'll I can do that. So our water demands, you can see what we do here in this graph is show a year over year. So twenty one is yellow, twenty two is the blue line and red is our twenty twenty three values. We're not seeing on April, actually have the number. It's fifty one million gallons of water that we produced to the system. This is actually showing, I think, the the typical trend we're seeing, and we're actually seeing a reduction in demand because of the the transfer of the carefree customers. That was, I think, as Mary indicated a little earlier, it was about eighteen percent of our our demand went down. This last month, we for April, we saw about a ten million gallon drop in our total demand in the system because of that. These next series of slides really just show where the water is going to, so I don't know if need to get too much into details. This is the deliveries of our central Arizona project water. Again, we it's we are still providing water to care carefree customers within this report that is starting to taper down. We provide still water to desert hills to support the system out there because groundwater, the wells cannot supply enough. And then we actually do provide some water to ranch Manana. In this case, the ranch Manana flows you're seeing here are actually the total of the raw CAP water we deliver to them. And it's also the the backwash water from the treatment plant. So as we process the the surface water and central Arizona project water, we, you know, the dirt and everything we remove from that is what we consider backwash water. So that is being sent up there. So when you see that number one hundred and twenty eight thousand or one hundred and twenty eight acre feet, that is actually those two components. It's raw water and actually backwash water is being sent to them. Talk about this for a while, how we think about it is revenue versus non-revenue water in the system. So that's the amount of water that we treat and put into the system versus what we actually recapture in revenue. So that's this is showing the health of the the billing, the metering system. And I'll give kudos to the staff who've been doing a lot of work recently to get caught up on things like, and I'll talk about more details on our metering system. We've had some challenges in the Cave Creek metering system because of the the age of that. But the staff have been doing a human's job of keeping up with that. And you can see the the graphs are coming together more closely. So at this point, when we look at the water that we're sending out of the treatment plant and then actually being able to bill for it, it is getting tighter and tighter, which is good for us. We do account for some things like some metering and actually hydrant flushing and some other stuff. We track that separately. But this number is actually getting better every year and I over year over year. And actually, I think that's a good kudo, so work by staff. And the first that first start was for Cave Creek. We we consider desert hills a little bit differently, so separately. So this is again showing the desert hill system. Desert Hills has always had for a number of years has had a better customer meters that we changed them out in twenty twelve. The the town started changing out those meters to a Neptune base system. So we've actually had better metering out there. So that's what we're trying to get caught up on. The Cave Creek system is to replace the meters, which are an older age and more inefficient. This is one that we're perplexed with, and we're going to try and look at. I know I've had discussions with the mayor on this and the council members before. This is the amount of water that we produce at the treatment plant, send back into the system. And it accounts for all the metered losses that we have at the plant. So and it also accounts for the the raw CAP meter that we have at the CAP canal, which is what is actually used to both account for and bill for our our water that we take off the canal. That is the green line you see on this. And for the last few months, it's it's been pretty close to the amount of water coming into the system. So it's it's a total of five different meters. We expect to have some inaccuracy between the five. But we've noticed last year, we actually were trending good. And then all of a sudden, the summer hit and it went very erratic. You can see sort of the end of that in July, August, the peak up there, so showing about a fifteen percent gap. So I'm working with staff right now to try and find out what's going on. And it's again, it's five separate meters that we combine the totals together, but something is going on in the system. It's important for us from an accounting standpoint, because as we go into discussions on CAP shortages, we need to know how much water we actually are moving up the canal. And we're accountable for for taking off the the CAP canal. So something something's not making sense and staff are working on that. We've worked on it before. We we got it in line, but last summer it went awry again. So we're we're going to have to take a look at this again to see if we have a metering error. And one of the the process meters or something else is going on. Long term, we do need to replace the C the meter at the CAP booster station. My fear is that project means we're going to have to take the pipeline down and actually cut into it, which could take a day to two days, which means we can't deliver water up the pipeline to the water treatment plant. So my goal is to do that once the the interconnect site is done, so we can actually breathe and actually do that project properly. Right now, it'd be pretty much an emergency work to get it done. So so we're going to hope to get better metering and sort out if there's any issues before that time. But in the end, the main meter down there needs to be replaced. CAP has had a conversation with us, but it's just it's very risky for the town right now, even in a winter timeframe. Because we will be taking the cat pipeline out of service to to do that installation. We do track the losses that we in in effect, sometimes we create ourselves. The red on this graph is the hydrant flushing that we do in the system. Our system distribution system has a lot of dead end lines in it, so we do actually have to move water out of it to make sure that we keep fresh water. Compliant water in the in the lines. So that's the red graph you're seeing there. And then the the water losses are actually the are. This graph I showed you last year or the year prior, actually, there was a lot more orange on it because we had a lot more leaks. We still getting leaks in the system, but staff are responding to it a lot more quickly and being able to shut those leaks down. So the amount of leakage is actually dropped considerably. We're getting into service line repairs and, you know, I hate to jinx myself, but the main line repairs have gone down a little bit, too. So I know staff are just going to hit me for saying that, but. But yeah, this is a tracking. You can see you can see the blurb in November. Every quarter, we have to do compliance testing. So this last one in March, I don't know if we captured all the flows, but usually it's before the end of the quarter that we have to flush the system so we make sure that we can keep in compliance. So and that's just the nature, again, largely of the distribution system is a large, large, large pipes in some cases and a lot of dead end lines without much demand on it. And that's that's going inherent to just the the distribution of our meters. So moving on to wastewater flows. This graph similar to the first one I showed for water, showing the year over year. In this case, we actually added the twenty twenty flows to wastewater. You can see we had a blip in twenty twenty, call that sort of the COVID blip when people were staying put and actually not leaving. We saw sort of an increase. But the more typical is the the yellow and the blue. The red, we're trending a little bit more, so there has been a little bit more growth that we've been seeing, but not that much. We're trending about the same. The wastewater treatment plant doesn't see a significant amount of growth. We get a little bit more new customer base, a small amount of customers added every year, but year over year, we're actually not that much. There's a challenging plant to operate just because of the lower flows in the summertime. You know, the the temperatures go up a little bit and we don't get the the biological loading coming down to that treatment plant. Because wastewater, as I mentioned to Carrie all the time, is a biological process, so we actually have to keep the bugs happy. The bugs aren't happy when there's no food coming down to them. So it is a challenge for our operational group to keep that plant running with the low flows that we see in the summertime. Next few slides, talking about the Ranch Minion and golf course and what happens there. So we do all the towns effluent currently has to. The only place we have it unless we recharge or send it to the wash, which is more considered emergency operations, is we send all the towns wastewater effluent up to the Ranch Minion Lakes. We also send them the backwash water from the treatment plant, as well as we can supplement that with central Arizona project water. I'd like to let council know we're actually setting up a meeting. We're actually going to have a meeting with the Ranch Minion staff this week to discuss what's going on at that site. In general, the there's inefficiencies that we have good tracking on. While we deliver to the one lake, they draw off of the what's referred to up here on the West Lake. And that's where their irrigation pump station and the contract states that they don't get charged for the water we deliver to them. They get charged for the water they pull out of the lake system. For the few years of accounting that we have really good numbers, including the monitoring of the overflow of the lake system. About a third of the water is currently being lost. That's between the overflow of the lakes when we're delivering more water than they can use. And then also between lake leakage and or evaporation. So we won't have that conversation with them, especially what's coming up with discussions on reductions in CAP water allocations. What might happen here? This is our our single biggest water user in the in the the water companies. We want to make sure we can have those conversations with them. Part of it goes back to some just general inefficiencies. Again, I mentioned the wastewater treatment plant can only deliver water to this location unless there's an emergency where we can overflow to some washes. But if we can figure out a way to recharge some of that water, that would give us a way to, instead of when the lakes, they don't need the water, we can actually recharge that water. So that's a study we're actually engaging in with Clear Creek Consulting to actually look at is is there opportunities within Cave Creek to actually recharge? So that might be requiring this in the capital program. We actually have some construction dollars for doing some improvements next year. We're not sure what the scope is at this point, but we're we got to start that process to get the balance and check with this. This user.
Can I ask a question, Sean?
Yes.
Then if we did recharge within Cave Creek, that would jeopardize our entire recharge program with CAP.
If we do with we if we withdraw it, if we would draw that water out to be a wells, then that that gets into the impacts in the long term storage credits that we have. So we'd have to then offset whatever we would draw from groundwater from the recharge amount. So it would impact that is something we're considering. But my understanding is if we were to recharge and we generate our own storage credits or our own facility, we can do that in conjunction with the.
That would be wonderful.
Yeah, it's just when we get into having to withdraw that water out of groundwater wells, it becomes an issue. And it's more of an accounting at that point.
Okay.
So for the recharge, would you have to do some kind of secondary filtering?
The the treatment plant actually produces what's called class A plus, which is the highest level of effluent. So I don't think we have to. We may, depending on the such what we do. You know, you can do large spreading basins, which would look like a lake, but effectively you're sending it in the ground, let it settle down. The A plus water would work fine for that. If we did something like a beta zone or injection well, we may want to filter it a little bit more. They're more subject to the filters binding off, so it really depends on the method that we want to use.
Okay, thank you.
And these next slide sort of show what I talked about. It's sort of the inefficiencies. And that's why, again, Ranch Minion staffer agreed to meet with downtown staff and talk about that. This is the deliveries, the total deliveries for this fiscal year, and these charts are just by fiscal year that we sent to them. Between the three sources, which is the the little bit of blue is the raw cap water. Usually we have to send it up to them during the summertime. And then we have the red, which is the the reclaimed water and divert water at the treatment plant. So that's the process water from the treatment plant right now. The the treatment plant we did in the numbers were running about ten percent of the water that we said we delivered. Raw water we delivered to plant is is in rejected through the process right now, as we're running about ninety percent efficiency with the plant. And then we have the treated F one. This is trying to show the difference between what we deliver total deliveries and then what they're billed for. Let's see, I thought another graph actually shows this a little more clearly. Maybe it doesn't. Maybe this is it. So this is the the inefficiencies that we're seeing here. So again, the blue is the combination of the three water supplies that we can send to the lakes. But they're only billed per the contract on what they draw off the lake, which is the orange line. You can see like in August, you'd expect them to be higher, but that's due to monsoons. So once the monsoons hit, they don't have to irrigate, but we're still delivering them water. So then then we get into the awkward situation in the middle of summer where their lakes get suddenly full and we're overflowing, which is not a good situation for us. We're not putting that water to beneficial use, so that's part of the discussion is how. There we think there's some inherent losses in the system, but how how is the town take charge and get beneficial use out of this water that's going up there and to better manage? Because we can't deliver all the water they need during the summertime before the monsoons hit. But in the wintertime, we deliver more water than they can use, as you can see on this graph in December, January, February, March. Where there the amount of water that they use for irrigation is very low compared to what we deliver to them.
And that's where you're trying, I mean, that's that's the opportunity. I mean, if you had to summarize everything we've seen so far, the opportunity is in the difference of those two numbers. What's this is the the recharge that you're talking about?
That'd be recharge. You know, there's been discussions on can we improve the efficiency of the plant? We've looked at year over year. We actually are getting more efficient. The Palm membranes are an efficient treatment system because you're still also using the 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 West Tech Trident filters. They're less efficient. The staff have been working and we've actually seen efficiency improvement. So there we can reduce the amount of backwash water coming out of the plant that'd be beneficial to us. The problem is, again, when the summertime, especially when they go into, say, the fall overseeding, when they need a lot of water very quickly. We can't make that up for them. And then that's when we get into right now, using the the CAP pipeline to deliver them raw water. In the past, the town has actually used groundwater wells to supplement that. We currently don't have any groundwater wells fully functional. So that's something we are also looking at, too. So we're looking at all the options, including talking to them just about the general inefficiencies of what we're seeing is, we believe, again, evaporation and liner losses that are occurring up there. So everything's on the table to discuss with them. And this is a just a quick summary, trying to think where we 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 measure the the losses coming out of the lake where the overflow is the orange. So we actually do have an overflow meter that we read Monday mornings. The staff go up there and actually read it. And then we calculate the evaporation based off the surface area. And Miracle Park County has an evaporation pond that they actually it's located at Lake Pleasant, and they published that information. So we're actually able to take that information and correlate it and assume that on the surface water, surface area of the lakes out there. And assume how much was not on this is actually, well, the suit it's on there assumes pond like seepage. It's something we we can't calc. We have to calculate. We can't measure, but we between we know the losses coming out of that system and we measure all what's coming in and what's leaving. So the the lake is seepage is the difference, about forty four acre feet a year. So. You know, about one third of the water that we're currently sending up there and that's historical has has not been billed for and has been, you know, lost from that system. So we do have to work with them to make it more efficient. From a regulatory compliance standpoint, we do have the town's backflow program. I've talked about this before. We've actually switched the Backflow Solutions, Inc., BSI is our third party vendor for doing this. So they've actually just recently updated their software package and we're getting some more better graphs and stuff like that out of them and being able to track usage better. So you can see that's an example of the between the quarters and the the number of past units versus failed. When someone fails, it means that they just have to get a retest. So, you know, this isn't, it's a live sort of data set. So when you see a failed on there, it doesn't mean that we've got failed backflows in the system and you say had to get a retest with a certain amount of time. So and and with the upgraded system, they're actually, we're noticing a lot more compliance. So people seem to like this using the new system better. Another regulatory compliance function we have is our pre-treatment program. This is the the any removal of anything from the wastewater system that or anything that a customer be putting in the wastewater system that could potentially damage either the collection lines or the treatment plant itself. So we've talked about a switching from it used to be a tracking spreadsheet that we used. Which was gotten very clunky. We had over fifty plus accounts on it. Plus, it wasn't very useful for keeping track of existing data. So we were using paper files and Excel spreadsheet. So we we transferred to a company called Swift Compliance, a third party vendor that does this online. So on the grand scheme, we're actually a fair small client for them. Typically, they use larger jurisdictions, but it seems to be very user friendly. It gives us a lot of dashboard information about who's doing what and who's in compliance with it. So we've already seen some good results with it. We're we're still in the midst of rolling this out to all the customers. We've actually reached out to most of the customers and told them about it. So we've got some good feedback from them, so. Yeah, looking forward to again, our two regulatory compliance are are pre-treatment and our backflow program are doing very well. This guy mentioned about the carefree disconnect. So this is a graphic that shows the customers that actually are being removed from the system. So in total, it was five hundred and fifty customers to be removed from the three areas area. We call them neighborhood A, B, and C. Neighborhood C has been fully disconnected for a while. It was done early last year, mid last year. Neighborhood B, there's still a few customers on in B. Our Nighthawk and and Hocksnest area. Carefree needs to do a improvement to a booster pump station before they can get the pressure zones up to the point that they can take that over. And then neighborhood A is the one where the most work has been going on. People may have noticed the work on Carefree Highway. So most of the accounts were actually transferred a few weeks ago. So at this point, five hundred and ten of the five hundred and fifty accounts have been transferred and are actually getting water from Carefree and no longer connected to the Cave Creek system. The work that you saw on Cave Creek Road of Carefree Highway going north was they actually had to do five crossings across Cave Creek Road to. Supply water to the commercial corner. So the low C V S store quest. Just north of there, they just are wrapping up the connection, the crossing at New River Road. And then they're right now at Canyon Breeze or Canyon, I think it's Canyon Breeze. And that's the last crossing location and disconnect location. Once all that work is done, they're waiting on their their reservoir that they built at Tom Darlington before they can actually provide all of those customers, especially the commercial customers with the fire flow that they need. So we had a meeting with them today. They think it's probably another three plus months before they're finally wrapped up. But the majority of the customers have been cut over and as indicated in my water slide is we're starting to see an impact on the system with the reduction in the value, a volume of water that we've had to send to the system. So our water resources update. I've got some notes I'm going to talk about because we did some updates. This is this is a hot topic for us right now. This is trying to show about just our C A P deliveries and orders that we've placed so far. And where we are in our the nine months of the of the current fiscal year, you know, we're a total to be or in total about. This under fourteen hundred acre feet delivered to customers that puts us on track about two thousand acre feet for the year, which is what we projected. You've seen that column on the side. We actually have in the middle column says a water to recharge. We've been very successful on getting water recharged with the C A P. Because of the transfer this year of the the municipal and industrial water rights is not complete yet. It it should be complete here. It's actually with the Bureau of Reclamation for finding signatures, but we worked out with Carefree. That since we we paid for that water at the beginning of the year, we paid the capital delivery change expenses. They allowed us to, we agreed to put that into our recharge. So see in January, we had three hundred and seventy eight acre feet recharged on the town's behalf. That was the the water that. Carefree wasn't good in need after the the transfer. So for this year, so that was a bonus for us. So the end of this year, we expect to do some more recharge this August. We'll have about two thousand acre feet in in long term storage credits recharge for the town, which is a great thing. And then at the bottom line here, we talked about we're working on forecasts and impacts any future C A P shortages. That's the big thing that's really stressing out everybody right now is what's potentially going to happen with our C A P. The town is not a hundred percent, but close enough to a hundred percent reliant on our C A P water supplies. That's both our. Municipal and industrial water, which is what the the town actually has, which the new allocation is two thousand two hundred and twenty eight acre feet. Or our non-deedian agricultural water, which we secured two years ago, it's three hundred and seventy eight acre feet. And that was purchased and paid for for to help support the surface water needs of desert hills. As of this year, we've already, as the shortage last year, we we were not able to order all the the N I A water. We were only or able to get seventy five percent. But moving forward, there's potential that we won't not only reduce the N I A water. But there's discussions on potentially reducing all the C A P water, Central Arizona Project Water coming to Arizona. So there's multiple alternatives being suggested at this point. The most extreme is almost a forty five percent cut in the Arizona C A P water for next year. Which could have a very drastic impact for the town. It's a huge impact for the town. So we're trying to figure out how we could potentially overcome that. That is one alternative. And I don't want to say that's the only alternative. There's multiple being suggested at this point, but that's the most extreme. So we're very working very closely with what the impacts could be and how the town can overcome that. We are working, we've actually already kicked off our utility master plans and integrated master plan. So the first stage and what we've been focused on for actually the last couple of months is both water supply and future demand and projection. So the team has been looking at this. We knew this was coming and we've looked at it. Now we're in the stage of now that we know the potentials. This can be as the team is helping us identify options. And so we have a very good team with Black and Beach and they've got a sub consultant who's doing a lot of work and he's worked in the water industry for thirty years in Arizona. In addition to that, we're working on last year, it's actually a year ago, we brought the water storage and drought management plan to council for that adoption. So we have the plan. So we're just wrapping up some code revisions that will bring forward to council. The code revisions allow us the 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 power of of council and staff to then. Actually enforce some of the things that that plan suggested, which is when we get into shortage conditions. We may have to first ask and then get into the case of actually require customers to actually reduce their water usage. So we need to have some code revisions to allow us fully to enforce that. So that'll be coming forward here shortly in the next few meetings for council to adopt.
Sean, how how soon with with the Neptune Neptune meters and the meter change out, how soon will we be in a position where we'd have more? Real time monitoring of individual water consumption.
Ironically, we just had a meeting with Neptune today. They're demoing their software package to us. If we get, we currently have six hundred thousand dollars in the C A P on of town resources to start the meter change out program. And we're expecting to get half a million dollars in federal grant dollars. With that much money and we have about eighteen hundred meters to change out, I think we could get it done in six months if we really hit it swallowing. We talked to the vendor, we've talked to both the supply side of getting the meters that they're available. And then we've also have the the installation side. So we've talked to both the the Neptune supplier can actually provide staff. And there's some other companies in the valley that can help us staff supplement it. So. And then the one thing is backing is up is what's called the collector. So what we're trying to move towards is called an A M I system. We have what's called an A M R. It's a drive by system. So with the the people don't have to get out of the truck that can drive by. It's it's a little radio transponder that's putting out a signal and telling you how much water is being used. And we pick that up. We do that monthly. We draft to drive by. An A M I system actually allows us to put collectors up. Or in addition to that, the new technology, we have the ability, this is they use a little cellular antenna that actually it's sending the signal out on an hourly or. Basis, the software package we just got demoed today is the actually customer interface that allow customers to see that information so they can log in and customers can actually set their own thresholds. So they can see that. So that software package is in the beta set. It should be released next week or sorry, next month. And we're actually going to get the pricing on to implementing that for our Neptune meters. But the met two meters itself, we're all geared up. We're trying to get hit this as fast as we can. We expect to get the federal grant dollars, the water smart monies. But if we don't, I think we should be able to get through. Probably sixty to seventy percent of the meters on our own and start that conversion. And my goal is to really push and use contractors, get that done as quick as we can. Because I do think that getting down to a customer level detailed metering would be a good thing for conservation for this town and can help inform customers. We don't want to be punitive with customers. We want to basically inform them. And I think getting that detail will help them make decisions and and and. We'll find things like leaks earlier and they can be notified earlier because we will be looking at it also and tracking what's going on in the system. So it'll be really good for us. Sorry, long winded answer to a short question. Sorry, Mayor. And then we are working on our general outreach efforts. So we're trying to do general to all customers like sessions like this where we can point out, you know, the severity of what might be happening. We're looking at, we want to do some focus efforts on our high water customers because that's where I think their biggest bang for the dollar is. You know, our largest water user in desert hills is the school district out there. The the Desert Hills Elementary School is our largest customer. So can you know, we need to have a sit down with them and see what they could potentially do to help save water out there. So and there's some other high water users in both systems. So we're working with staff to make sure we identify that and look at what focused outreach we can do. But in general, if we get down to, you know, the the significant, the the what I call the nuclear option, like forty five percent cut in C A P allocations. That's that's going to impact everybody, but specifically Cave Creek will have a big impact. So we need to be prepared for that. So. Just today, there's actually a meeting on from the Bureau of Reclamation because they're doing what's called an S E I S. I had to write this out, a draft supplemental environmental impact statement. It was the second meeting on on the operation of the Colorado River. So that's actually the Bureau of Reclamation actually manages. We follow underneath Bureau Reclamations and how they're actually they're proposing to manage the the lakes and river and Colorado River. So we want to get a statement over to the federal government and saying, you know, don't forget Cave Creek. This is very important to us. We we don't have the luxury of long term storage credits recharge or a lot of wells that we can fall back on to which a lot of the other municipalities in the valley have. So it's very important for us.
Regarding that, have you have we actually taken a look at what our water table looks like? In case we had to drill a couple of wells?
Actually, last year we did some initial evaluation on some of the wells. We the vendor is going to come back and he's got some time. I actually reached out to him last week. He's going to come back. We actually need to clean some of the casings. And so we're going to do some brushing and bailing next month, next few weeks. He had some time. And then we're actually the next step will be of the six casings that we think might be viable. The next step will be to to identify some, if not all, to do pump testing. That allow us to both check the volume of water available in those old casings and the water quality. We do have some old water quality data and in some cases there was high arsenic. So we'd have to before we can bring it into municipal water system, we have to figure out what we do with that. Or if we we maybe that becomes some of the water that we use to supplement our deliveries to Branch Minjana. But yeah, we are continuing that evaluation drilling a well these days. From a municipal standpoint, you know, it is a fairly expensive proposition and getting someone aboard. So we're going to see what we can do with the casings that we do have, but we might have to go that option also.
Yeah, I I just think it'd be wise to get an approximate price on that in case we have to get on that route because. Talking with some friends back in Washington, D C, they're saying that that. The current administration wants to cut twenty five percent of the overall allocation to. At a minimum to California, Arizona, Colorado, and and the other. The other people who pull water from the Colorado River because they want to recharge both of the reservoirs. And then they'll consider. Not that they will, but they'll consider increasing or decreasing that twenty five percent cut at some point in the future.
Yeah, they could. It is twenty five percent with the way our allocations right now, we might be, we should be able to weather that is we start talking larger percentages. That makes me very nervous. But it does mean we need to start looking at backup option.
That's provided that we. We kind of put a moratorium on building the things for it.
Yeah, we'd have to look at the growth in the system and and you know, we have with the water two thousand twenty one water policy. We have greatly reduced the number of new connections adding to the hills, but the Cave Creek system, there is some growth. It's not that significant. But that would be have to have a discussion. We'd come back is we'd have to say, you know, can we allow new growth and new connections to the the system? So yeah, that would be something we'd have to bring back to council and discuss. So. Mayor jumped ahead and brought me in. One of the things I wanted to highlight with our distribution improvements is the improvements in the Neptune metering system. So the town went to installing Neptune meters out in the desert hills system in about two thousand twelve. And the project was wrapped up. There's nineteen hundred desert hills customers. So that project was completed around two thousand nineteen, just as I was coming on board. I think the last sixty meters went in the system. The Neptune's are very reliable. They've proven to be very good. And we can convert them. Most of the ones, not all the ones in desert hills into what the A M I system. So the staff have been struggling in the last few months is because of the number of failed meters in the Cave Creek system. Most of our meters are are two thousand five or earlier meters. And then they also the little radio transponder, which is a separate unit is also around the same vintage. So for a while, we had a running total of over a hundred failed meters in the system where if you the meter body was failed and or the radio transponder was failed. So after we went around and did our our reading, our drive by radio readings, the staff would spend. Two to three days just going out manually reading meters where they could and or identify meters that had failed that per code after two months. We can estimate, but we actually then we can't estimate anymore. So we have to get them out of the system. So we were able to get past that backlog. And now we're at the point where we're seeing typically around thirty meters in Cave Creek failing a month. So my goal is with the meter replacement program to hit that as hard as we can and just get them out of the system and get past that. But if credit to the staff, and then we did bring an outside contractor to help us get ahead of ahead of what we're back in and cave creek. We actually had to do that twice now. Because we had so many failed. And. And again, I mentioned about the software package that we did, which is something that we can make available through our website, the town website and or our billing paying system. We can have it so that the people can see their billing consumption data. It's really interesting, especially when we get into the more when if we can get to the hourly read system, the A M I system, customers will see that information. Again, they can set alarms for themselves and everything, even right now with our monthly read. That data will be in there. It'll have two date, two years worth of data that they can see and we can look at and it's it's the demo is very user friendly. So we're excited about that. Quickly in distribution system was again, as part of the carefree disconnects, we actually had to bring an existing pressure reducing valve site. At Canyon Ridge Drive Online, this is sort of, it doesn't show you the the amount of work that was done here. You can see the old P R V site. Which actually took us a a couple of days to find because it was so buried. It had been turned off about twelve years ago. So we dug up the entire area and installed the new P R V and bolt. Actually, they weren't new. They were actually used. So they were actually ones that were on the east side of the road that as Carefree was doing their work, they changed the pressure zone boundaries. They didn't need this anymore. So they they worked with us and we salvaged both the pressure reducing valve, rebuilt it. Our staff and then we had the vault moved over to the side of the road. So it turned out is a good project that we worked together collaboratively with. We use their contractor, Aiken Gardner. We had a job order contract that we can work with them. And this helps the system work a little bit better. In the past, we were relying on a six inch P R V that's around the corner that's being abandoned. So we have now an eight inch P R V in line. So it actually gave us a little more system capacity to move water from zone four to zone one. So benefited us. The wastewater treatment plants, they're still continuing to do some work. These are some photos. I've talked about the work in the S P R basins in the aeration system. So that is now complete. It was just wrapping up as of the the timeframe of this this report. Kind of hard to see the collapsed tubing, but yeah, we had a lot of issues with the aeration system and but the divers were able to go in. We it was interesting. We did it live. They were doing everything by feel. I was talking to them like you can't see anything down there and they're going down and taking these things apart. We use the same divers to clean out our water reservoirs, but they obviously use different suits and we cleaned them up first. But they're a really good team and they've worked it really well and that it's we've seen a marked improvement in in the 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 biological treatment basins at the plant because of that. The collection system for the timeframe of this report, we actually did do a cleaning on the north side of Cave Creek Road between Vermilion Schoolhouse Roads. The lines were dirty. They needed to be cleaned out, but what we're finding is a lot of deterioration in the manhole basis themselves. So I suspect it was more just the concrete that was used in the basis rather than the severe deterioration due to the H two S gases. But it it doesn't mean that we need to get into these manholes and and form them up properly because they're holding up material which then causes odors in the system. The other thing that we're actually working on as part of this year's capital improvement program is a repair on Ranch Minjana Boulevard. We do have a twelve inch line that's just upstream of our Ranch Minjana list station that there's a section of ductal liner pipe that we didn't know until we videoed it. Because it didn't show up any plans, but it's a wash crossing that's highly deteriorated and there's a dip in the line just south of it. So we're working with a B and F contracting council has given us the authority to work with them as our construction contractor for shore repairs. So they're working on the scope of work and the goal is to get that done before the end of June with this year's capital program to get that twelve inch obstruction out of the system. Next year, our goal is to do a crossing that's an indoor hills wash right next to Cave Creek Road where we have a twelve inch ductal liner sewer line that's in problems. So those would be two big improvements in the collection system. And then we do have money to do, continue to clean inspect and also do manual repairs and everything. So I think we're making great strides on the collection system and and getting caught up on some deferred maintenance. As part of our master plan is quickly is we actually did inflow flow meters at the site. So we're we're actually updating the wastewater model. So this gives you an idea of how to do a manned entry. So you can put in a monitor. So we actually see the live data at the different flow basins that we do have at the three lift stations. Because there's a lot more detail of where the water's coming from and allows us to come up with projections on, you know, as growth occurs. Because now we know what the current customer basis is returning in flow to us. And then water treatment plant has has a lot of work done on it. This is improvements that we had to do to our our West Tech number four, might be hard to see. But this is the upflow care clarify the first section. So we've had issues with all three of them. The two and and one were repaired prior to this. And then we've been inside of all three and we've the the metal has deteriorated. The coating interior coatings have been eaten away. So stand have to remove all the material. We get down, we sample last the area, grind it down and then weld on new material. Then we we recode it and reinstall it. So we've actually touched all all three of those filters in the last two years. Again, most we had one we used a contractor for, but the other two have actually been done with town staff. Um, just an update on the the, uh, the water treatment, the CAP, uh, pipeline. What you're looking at here is a, uh, what's called an air relief valve. So as the water line goes up and down, uh, air will former at the high spots, you actually want to actually get that out of the system because that actually can cause a blockage in the system. So the cap pipeline being over twelve miles line and and rises over six hundred feet has a number of air relief valves. Trying to remember, I think it's thirty six different locations that we have. This is one that we ironically had just recently rebuilt, uh, contractor did a deceleration lane and had to remove the original one. So we put it in. We thought we were doing a good thing by putting it in a above ground. So we could better maintain it. Um, but lo and behold, because we put it above ground, someone drove over it.
Yeah.
So, um, this actually, uh, because that happened, it was in the, uh, uh, City of Phoenix right away, uh, we found it because when the operator started to, uh, try to start the pipeline that next morning, he couldn't get the pipes, the pumps to work. So we went down, we found it, I had to isolate it and then we had to to bleed the line off. So it's it's one of the risks and one of the failure points that keeps me up at night, um, worrying about how this, you know, the the the, um, ability for us to provide water and it shows the importance, I think of the City of Phoenix interconnect that we won't be wholly reliant on this one pipeline sending water. So we can obviously still something we need to address, but we can breathe instead of doing this, um, live. In this case, we uh, took a long time to, uh, get the air out of the line and get the plant operational. We had to run probably an extra six or seven hours a day to get the water into the system that we needed. So. Um, leading it to the city of Phoenix interconnect, you've seen some renderings, uh, we produced. We're actually working on a package to send out to the neighbors. Uh, this is one actually looking for Cave Creek Road. We have some from the side. Uh, that are showing again before and after, uh, sort of what the the grading profile will look like and what you'll see, uh, and then what will look like once we get some landscaping in there, it matures up. This is looking from southbound on Cave Creek Road as you just come and approaching the site. So you'll see the reservoir there. And the 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 site wall is actually containing the, uh, the the bleach storage system for, uh, chlorine injection and then the booster pump station. So and we have some renderings from the backside would show the landscape berm and then what that'll look before and after that we'll send out as a package to the residents in the area. So, uh, we have, um, uh, Carrie indicated we reached out to get congressional direct, uh, funding for this project. Uh, we think we will be successful. We had a meeting on April nineteenth with the Water of Structure Finance Authority from their, it's their federal programs committee. And tomorrow morning, we actually have a meeting with their their board. Um, that will be the, if they approve at that point, then then we just move forward with coming back to council to actually authorize the loan documents. And that would give us the authority with the Water of Structure Finance Authority. So it's all coming together. We do have the construction manager at risk. I need to come back with you with the contract for the selected firm uh, that we'd like to move forward with. And then Black and Beach has been, uh, wrapping up design and mostly these renderings are a little bit in a holding pattern while we sort out the funding issues on the project right now, but we're still committed to doing the project. So. And with that, I can answer any questions. I did have is a quick, I know I've talked a long time, a couple of public service announcements. Next Thursday, we actually have a couple of big things going on, um, in the morning. We have a repair at our stagecoach lift station. People probably will not notice that, uh, but you might see some activity on, um, Schoolhouse Road or sorry, um, uh, Cave Creek Road. And I think it's Long Rifle, uh, where the lift station is located. Uh, we, um, have a the one of the check valves has failed. So the site's been only operating on one, uh, one of the two pumps. We actually removed the check valve. But when they constructed the site, they did not put an isolation valve in the force mains. We have to drain back a, um, I think it's twenty eight hundred foot, uh, four inch force main to the site and then, uh, put in a an isolation valve in order to replace a check valve. So we can run it and the flow meters failed. So that's Thursday morning and then that evening. APS is actually wanting to replace a transformer at our Carol Heights Booster Station. Carol Heights is important because it actually feeds into two pressure zones. We can backfeed our pressure zone seven, um, which is the main town core through the near area system, but we actually have a number of customers in our pressure zone eight that might be impacted. Um, staff think they've located a temporary generator that we can bake to the site. So we can actually, while APS is changing at the service entrance, we can keep zone eight in water. We haven't put out a public notice right now because we were hoping to be able to get a generator up there. So we can keep the zone eight, uh, people in, uh, water. We probably pull, we'll put out a notice just in case anybody does get affected and they, and something does happen. They'll probably be released tomorrow. Um, but we we think we found a solution to keep everybody wet in water. So APS, the transformers failed. They they basically notified us and they basically picked a date that they said we'll come out and replace it. So we're working around them. So with that, I can answer any questions.
I have a question. Sean, do you have a magic pill to fill all your staff positions and have them stay?
Mayor Councilmember, I wish, Vice Mayor, I wish.
I know I was being facetious, but do you have any kind of a plan now you're going to resolve?
Yeah, we've 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 recently had some luck because we've actually reached out to some, um, people we've used before and we've we've brought some people on board as part time contract, uh, part time employees. And we did that because of risk management. So we actually have three people who are currently part time employees to help fill in at the water treatment plant. So that's giving us a benefit because they can have a little more flexibility in their schedule to fill the odd schedule locations. Um, everybody I've talked to in the industry is struggling right now. Um, you know, we've we've looked at, uh, uh, salary compensation. Everybody's fighting for the same people and we're all throwing more money at it. So a lot of jurisdictions are offering, uh, signing bonuses. Um, they're offering higher ranges. So we've tried to match the ranges to make sure we're competitive. You know, we're a small jurisdiction on the edge of the valley. So in some cases, people have to drive a fair distance to get up here. So that's part of the discussion too. And so, um, yeah, there, I I don't see a magic pill. There's a little this made because we actually had a few water treatment plant staff that we had sort of grown in the fact that they didn't, uh, have their full licensing, um, uh, certification rates that they needed. And we stayed with them for two years while they got their licenses. They got their licenses. We gave them, uh, a, um, a step increase for getting that license and then they leveraged that to go to another municipality, get another step increase.
So one thing, one thing you might want to consider doing is offering things like a housing allowance. Um, but they take the housing allowance. They've got to stay for a year or two years or whatever that. But a housing allowance might be something that would lure them up here to keep that to keep them here.
Yeah, we're thinking of all things, uh, mayor council is, uh, yeah, we we have looked at, we I think we looked at the city of Phoenix standard. If if they, if you get a bonus, you're have to commit, otherwise you have to reimburse them. So between bonuses or some other things where we're trying to, a lot of people, again, we've worked on, I see, uh, Carlo over there. She's really been helping us with our outreach efforts because, you know, the town actually has really good, uh, employee benefits. And sometimes it's hard to communicate that between, uh, the health savings, uh, account plan and and things like, a lot of people that come up here and they say, well, I didn't know you're part of state retirement. Well, yeah, yeah, we want to highlight that. Um, because then if they're in another state retirement, they come here and it just transfers and they continue to grow. So we've done a lot of outreach and just trying to promote, um, uh, uh, all our the benefits that we can provide to people. We do have a tuition reimbursement program. You know, we, uh, if they're on call, there's mileage reimbursement. We don't, we've actually up the, uh, uniform, um, allowance for the people. We don't provide uniforms, but provide people with an allowance to buy boots and and, um, uh, other clothing. So we provide shirts and jackets, but, uh, pants, but we up that we doubled the amount of that from two hundred fifty to four, five hundred dollars. Little things like that, that I think anything that we can help incentivize it. So. But yeah.
Yeah, the biggest single thing though up here in Cave Creek that they're going to face is housing. Yeah. So if you give them a housing allowance, that at least equals the playing field with some of the other jurisdictions.
I think that's a really good idea.
Good point. So we're going to put an RV at the plant and just let them live there, but.
It might be some FEMA trailers available.
Thank you, Sean.
Uh, there's still to comment on this.
We do. David Phelps. Okay. Well, that's it.
Next item on the agenda is presentation of the quarterly fire and emergency medical report. We're going to try and share the mic tonight since we.
Y'all know each other quite well.
Yeah. Trying to be real friendly. I mean, you gotta. Find something up. Okay. Uh, we're going to try and make this pretty quick for you and give you the opportunity to ask us questions, but there's a couple of things um, that are out there. Obviously, one of the big things that was hanging over us was the Carefree boat. We'll talk about that a little bit at the end, if you like, if you have questions about that. On the biggest thing with that is we want to make sure that, um, you and the Cape residence understand the depth of the system that we have here. And don't believe all the stuff that was put out. There was a lot of misinformation that was put out. So we happy to answer any of those questions for you. But first we'll go through the, uh, quickly, we'll go through the, uh, quarterly report. Again, this is for the the what would be the third quarter of the fiscal year. And so the numbers that you see, um, from the last time, what I've changed is we're now running fiscal numbers. If you recall last time, because if we had our one year anniversary, so we had an entire calendar year. So you've got a calendar year report. But this is now updated to the fiscal year and each calendar year, I'll give you a new updated report. But this is where we're at, um, January through, or, um, July first. Sorry, the quarter is January through March. I'm trying to talk too fast here. I apologize. And you can see the numbers that we had here again, uh, it was a hundred and seventy two calls for the quarter. We're still running about fifty seven calls per month in out of Cave Creek. And one of the questions that it came up was how many of those calls it's been spouted here lately? How many of those calls are to other jurisdictions? Because the claim was your truck's never going to be in the town. Well, we run about four calls a month to another jurisdictions. But in the meantime, we end up getting, um, well over five hundred calls to or resources come to Cave Creek. So we get a lot more than go out. So that's one of the issues that had come up. Um, you can see the training, we one of our, as part of our contract, we track the training hour to make sure that the EMS and and fire training is done. Um, the types of calls are fairly consistent with the quarter again. EMS is our number one call type. We did have several, um, special operations, trail rescues, service calls and then seventeen fires in the quarter. Last year to date, even so, we had fifty seven fires so far, forty two service calling. And again, the trail rescues that we've been having. And they're starting to pick up again. Um, and that it's not just trail rescues, but it's special rescues, uh, like the, um, the water rescue that we had occurred here a couple, about a month ago now. Chief told, we'll be talking about that here in a little bit. So our types of calls are staying the same. Here's the big things that happened during the quarter. We did our one year anniversary and you got the data on the number of calls we had. Um, we were officially approved for a firehouse foundation grant in February, council approved it in February for twenty eight thousand. Um, in fact, talking today with those folks about where that equipment is, we haven't got it yet. Um, the insurance grading community, again, this is another thing that's been missing, uh, interpreted with the things that went on between the communities. Cave Creek did a complete grading of our insurance grading. And that's where the insurance ISO comes in and verse that comes in. And they they rate your service levels and they rate how fast you can get the number of units that you need to to a fire and things like that. Your water system is part of it. Your dispatch is part of it. Your staffing is part of it. We increased an entire grading system. The scale goes from a ten, which is basically no service to a one, which is there's somebody almost on every quarter, corner. And so we went from a four to a three. Um, Rome Metro was the previous four, went from a four to a three. And primarily because of our dispatch and our our, uh, resources that now come to this community is what what made that grading go up. That grading goes into effect, I believe it's August first. So that, uh, information has gone out to the insurance companies. So we did a very nice, uh, very happy with that. Um, February, we just, uh, tried to assist the Carefree Council, talking about our experiences because there was so much misinformation being uh, dispatched up there about what actually occurred in Cave Creek. So we tried to let them know this is not our real experience. This is what actually happened. Um, we participated with the Corps of Service and the Cooperators Meeting, what that is, is hosted by the Tonneau National Forest to look at the upcoming wildland fire season. Um, there's a handout that you just got talks about what occurs now if we have a brush fire. And then in March, um, we had some heavy rain events again. Uh, we did our resident brush drop off. And so we've had two each year so far, six events. We totaled five hundred and thirty seven loads and over a hundred and twenty seven tons of green waste that we've collected. And we can and I will get that number for how much that cost us to to empty that, but that's our only cost is the dumping of the green waste. Now, the rest is is covered by the town staff. Um, we opened our most recent fire survey, which closed yesterday. And then we participated in the rodeo and parade events. And then we ended the quarter with the bike week, which is always a challenge. And again, we worked very close with, uh, Daisy Mountain and the Miracle County sheriffs and the staffs we brought in. And we had, in my estimate, estimation, a very, very successful bike week. Um, there's a lot of people that come through. There's a lot of happenings in town. And, uh, we didn't have any major events. We didn't end up on CNN. So that's a good thing that we we look at. So with that, um, what I want to do is is turn some of this over to Chief Tobin to talk about some of these significant events that that occurred of this quarter. And we can go with that. We'll start with the, uh, the water rescue.
Thank you, Jim, Mayor and Council. I think I was here, uh, after this incident, uh, briefly, but I don't think it was on the agenda to do so. Um, this incident took place on March twenty second, twenty twenty three. I know you're all aware of it because it was all over the news, both locally, statewide and, uh, the national news. A very significant incident early in the morning on the twenty second, around seven o'clock in the morning, where there was a very legitimate, um, water rescue, um, where two construction workers were uh, perched on the top of their construction pickup truck, uh, with raging higher ra- raging waters that were rising. Um, so, uh, this call went out as a water rescue, which is a significant, uh, danger to firefighters and other first responders trying to attempt to make these rescues to complicate matters. It was during a rainstorm. So our partners, both in the, uh, Miracle County Sheriff's Office and their box helicopter and our partners in the automatic aid system with the Phoenix Police, um, helicopter, firebird helicopter, were not able to lift off because of the visibility. So, um, that was basically our main plan because despite the fact that that's a aircraft operation, it's fairly safe to do so, uh, in the right conditions, but they were not able to lift off. So we, uh, utilized the, um, aerial platform ladder truck from the Daisy Mountain Fire District. Ladder one forty five was dispatched and you can see them in that top left picture, uh, setting up their ladder to reach out to those, uh, gentlemen that were on that, uh, pickup truck. You can also see the partners that in these pictures that were there, the Scottsdale uh, white pickup truck is the battalion chief that was running the incident. There were multiple specialized units from the Phoenix Fire Department, including the unit uh, south of the Carefree Highway on Cave Creek Road Squad twenty nine, which is, uh, trained and as specialists in water rescue. Not just from a first responder's perspective, but they were highly trained technical rescue folks. Um, they were all responded to make this as safe an incident as we possibly could create. We had, uh, rescuers, oh, on the back end or the the far end of the water in case the either a first responder or one of these victims fell off the truck that we could rescue them from the water's edge. And we had lookouts up on the on the, uh, up upside of the water. Uh, and we had firefighters on both sides, uh, of that incident as we could. So it was very significant. It ended up, ended up being uh, a a well planned and well executed rescue of these, uh, two individuals off the top of that vehicle. By the way, this car was further swept down that, uh, wash after that rescue took place. So it was a very significant and very dangerous operation that turned out, um, very well for for all of us. So, uh, and again, got not only just local attention, but national attention. Ironically, uh, a few hours after this, the Daisy Mountain Fire District was up in Yavapai County and Black Canyon City where they were, uh, uh, anticipating a, uh, flooding in the entire town as one of the washes was overcome. Uh, one of the major rivers was flowing at record, uh, flood levels. And we were setting up evacuation centers in Black Canyon City for the residents there. Our cert team put up a, uh, a trailer and assisted with an evacuation site there before the Red Cross arrived. So in the morning, we were in, uh, Cave Creek, uh, doing this water rescue in in your town. And then we're up in Yavapai County helping out um, the residents up in Black Canyon City, uh, just to further, uh, bring you up to speed on how the system works as a result of the, uh, of the, uh, concern of what was happening in Black Canyon City. The Phoenix Fire Department, uh, staged units at the outlet mall at Carefree, uh, at the I seventeen and Anthem. Again, specialized units from, uh, from their system in the event that something happened up in Black Canyon City that required swift water rescue and swift boats. Uh, those units were staged there in the event that they were needed about twenty five minutes away. If we, uh, needed to call on them, they would have been there. Those are statewide resources that are, um, covered under federal grants that come into the state that assists our region for these types. That come into the state that assists our region for these types of incidents, so. Uh, that's just another example of of how the resources come into play within the automatic aid system.
Other thing I'll say to that is underneath, you see the list of units that came to that one call. And everybody asks why so many more resources are in Cave Creek than the number of calls? That's why that one incident had all of those resources that were dispatched for that incident that we now get because we're part of the regional system. The other couple of things that we wanted to talk about real quick is again, some of the misinformation out there. Um, I I believe it went to you earlier, if not, I can get it to Carrie tomorrow. Talking about the response times that have been um talked about, the lack of timing and response. Um, what has occurred next door, unfortunately, if you listen to the comments. It sounds like they're going to shut down their fire station because. Just like we did here, we bought this fire station, we put the resources in from Daisy Mountain. And the call distances and the call volumes are about the same, so to make the comment that their response times were going to go up and their citizens are going to be less served. Is a ridiculous statement because they're not going to, they weren't going to shut down that fire station. And so it was so blatant that uh the city of Phoenix and um Chief Duran from Phoenix is in uh one of the co-chairs. Of the Causk of the Central Arizona Safety Committee. Had to write a letter to Carefree saying, this is really, really bad, what you're saying is not even close to true. And so there's a letter from, it's Carrie got a letter here a couple of years ago. Carefree got a letter saying what's being said up here and Carefree is so far off that we have to respond. They didn't want to respond, but they had to respond, and that letter is available to you as public record.
So just to clarify, Jim, the town of Carefree was erroneously communicating information.
It was the citizens with Carefree, it was the you had the two sides up there. But everything was in the paper and everything was being transmitted to the town for the town to respond, which is. Why the mayor and Carrie and I went up there early on and then I made one extra trip up trying to say. What you're saying about the the response and about the system in Cave Creek is absolutely false. A lot of good it did, obviously, with the vote tonight, we saw that. Um, it's the the just the there. The comments for the Summer of No Boats were so off-base and so out of line that it it and those listed a response again from the region saying, sorry about that. So. Um, the next thing that we wanted to talk about is the severity of the brush staffing. Um, we have staffed up starting on Monday, May first, so you have the two extra staffing for the severity now, we haven't gone. I believe Carrie mentioned earlier that we're going to um increase our uh risk level next week. Uh, we've been blessed with some cool weather until just recently and some rain, so. Uh, but that's going to go up, but the staffing has already gone up. And so actually, you have four persons on the engine, two on the brush, two on the battalion ride and two in the ambulance at this. Station currently. And so it's a pretty full house over there right now for ten hours a day. So um what was handed out to you, um Chief Tobin got me the dispatches. And what happens when there is a call for a brush fire now in Cave Creek before you got one engine and one brush truck? And you saw what happened here a few years ago with the resources of that. So you have two things on there, you have there, and I'll let him talk about it, he has a yeah. Um, urban interface response and you have a typical brush response and how that can uh grow up, but that's what's coming now to Cave Creek. If we get the call for an incident or a structure under. And at risk.
Yeah, thanks, Jim, and again, uh, it's a lot of information, certainly you can, you could read the. The information that I provided, which are the standard operating procedures inside the regional dispatch system on the. The types of incidents and the number of units that have dispatched to those um so that you can see for yourself the uh the. Need the need for immediate, uh the quickest, most available units to respond with the appropriate equipment. Brush trucks, water tenders. Um, uh, command officers to organize the workers to keep them safe. Engine companies are all included in our brush fire land firefighting response. In addition to that, Daisy Mountain firefighters are all red card certified as wildland uh fire firefighters as well, so they have. Uh, even more knowledge than uh where I came from before, which was is almost a. Almost entirely structural fire department, although certainly started to move into wildland urban interface. But Daisy Mountain, by the nature of us looking a lot like Cave Creek, we have red-carded wildland firefighters that are state-certified. Firefighters as well, so um there's more than enough response uh on initial unit on initial dispatch. And uh any incident commander can request additional resources and they'd be available as the most appropriate unit inside uh on that system.
How did the training program go at the old tumbleweed?
It that um it's mayor, uh spice merit, it it was amazing. So of course firefighters always like the practice. Um, and whenever you get the opportunity to get an actual structure that you can uh. Do your do your trade on is very, very helpful. Plus, it's an opportunity for company officers to teach their government members about how construction methods. And how buildings are constructed in a hands-on approach to an actual real building as opposed to a model or a mock-up. And those uh those situations where we can practice on real buildings are second to none when it comes to. Having real good effective training, we really appreciated that that opportunity.
On the demolition crews started to work again Monday morning. We had it through Sunday night for training and then they started again Monday morning, so we won't be training on it anymore.
They get they get right on it once we're done because it becomes dangerous.
And then the the last thing I wanted to talk about again, this is it's and I hate doing this, I hate responding to social media. But according to the social media with the issues that were going on in Carefree. Um, you guys and and council, you guys, I'm sorry, Mayor Council. Aware that there was a a pretty significant fire at the chip plant over off the Carefree Highway. And I seventeen here, but a week and a half ago or so. And according to the social media, um all of the trucks from Daisy Mountain, everybody was over there and the town was left completely. Uncovered for not extended period of time. And that's uh again, was just patently false, and so I'll let the chief respond to that, but. Um, the system is designed to help cover for those types of incidents. So yes, our truck might have went over there because of those additional move-ups that covered different parts of this area and I'll let him respond to that.
Yes, um mayor and members of the council. The way the automatic aid system is is designed is that the closest, most appropriate unit is dispatched to an incident regardless of their jurisdiction. So just because you have Daisy Mountain firefighters on your fire truck here. And and Cave Creek doesn't mean that your fire truck in Cave Creek goes anywhere any different than a firefighter would in another city. Just because he's on a Daisy Mountain truck doesn't mean that he goes to Black Canyon City before someone else would, it has nothing to do with any of that. So in this situation, it was a very complex incident, unfortunately, I was out of town in Indianapolis, was watching it on my phone. Uh, but it was obviously the chip plant, there's a lot of energy associated with. That type of construction and potential hazardous materials that might be on site and and the types of buildings it is, it's also a. A homeland security risk for not just our state, their country as well. So there was an initial response to that incident, uh early information show uh. We laid back was that there were missing workers, uh six people that could not be accounted for. And with an unknown reason that that this incident had occurred, so there's a lot of, there's a pessimistic approach that was taken. To the incident to keep not just the firefighter safe, but to also try and. Uh, set up for the potential of having a large-scale mass casualty incident. So a lot of units were respond responded to that and specialized units as well, as you can imagine. Water supply, water issues weren't very good in a construction yard, so. And in an incident where you had a working fire potentially, there you need to uh make sure you had layered responses. So that the incident could be contained adequately, there were a lot of units that responded there, not just from. Phoenix and Daisy Mountain and Glendale and Poria, we had a lot of units that were there. So there's an automatic system built in place that when that number of units is dispatched to a specific incident. That the dispatch center, the regional dispatch center begins to move resources around the system to cover the holes. And to make sure that there's adequate response through as many facilities as we can, does that mean every one of them has a fire truck unit? It does not because it's the that would be the equivalent of lifting up a blanket and exposing your feet and pulling it back down and exposing your head. So we try and balance oh. Units uh they they do it, the the dispatch center moves. Units around so that we have adequate coverage in all of the areas that are necessary, so in this specific case. Uh, station that I had just mentioned before, the the technical team on Cave Creek Road South to Carefree Highway Station Seventy-two was also dispatched. To that incident because there had this material certified members. I had members from my hazardous materials team, which uh stationed at Seventh Street and Circle Mountain. And were also dispatched to since they wouldn't have been had they not had a specialized capability that they were. That they could provide to the unit uh to the incident, so um when all of those units went out. Engine one forty-seven was uh dispatched on a second alarm assignment meeting. The initial units were committed and working and they needed to, we needed to about to put in place a. A a layered approach of relief and additional needs that might come up, so you. Call for additional units that were either used or just in reserve. Engine one forty-seven responded, so the Phoenix Dispatch System sent the unit to that that fire station on uh Station Seventy-two. Um, all of the stations in Daisy Mountain were covered with additional uh units from the Phoenix Fire Department. And the ones that weren't had one of our ambulances in those stations as well, so. The system does a really good job of filling in the gaps and they do that automatically. Um, as the incident progresses, and that's the case in this incident as well. When they uh when when we were achieving tactical benchmarks and moving the incident through to more of a controlled. Environment, the units were released and went back to the foundation.
So how did it turn out? What 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 caused it? Was anybody hurt and were were the six people found?
The six people were not lost, they had self-exicuted. Uh, welcome to my world, that's what we hear all the time. Every incident that go on, it seems like someone's telling you about someone that's lost or trapped or not around, and next thing you know, they were never there, or they self-exicuted themselves. But you work on the information that you get, the six people were accounted for, so it wasn't a mass casualty incident, we. Uh, backed off of all of the medical components that would be necessary, but it was a fire in a trash chute. That was filled up with like construction debris, how it started, I don't know, it's a city of Phoenix incident, so their investigators. Came to a conclusion on whatever that was, I'm sure accidental. I don't think they they came to any idea that it was malicious in any uh any way, there was quite a bit of smoke. Uh, from the incident that, so I had a lot of people concerned, but it was a trash chute full of. Uh, refugees that had gotten stuck and built up and then the fire started, we couldn't get. Enough water in any kind of a meaningful way to the seat of the fire, so it was very difficult to extinguish on a construction site. Um, my folks were lifted up on a cherry picker, I think, and went up to uh the roof area and we're squirting water down that trash chute. From from the. Ultimately, they would have turned out to be. Not very glamorous.
I'm gonna just to follow up for a little bit, the unit, the system has units. Nine hundred series units that are backup engines that are staffed, so when these units move out, they can move. Like a nine thirty into this area or cover up and none of the Scottsdale units went, so we still had Scottsdale units in the area. And also in the Cave Creek Station, the whole time wasn't dispatched was the ambulance units, so it would have been a medical call, which is bulk of our calls. Would have at least got the ambulance unit first until the rest of the unit's kind of got here, so we we were never. Uh, stripped of resources over here, as was said on this, the uh social media stuff.
Um, Phoenix has units called adaptive response units. Fancy word to say an extra piece of apparatus in a station that when they move to cover another area, doesn't leave the one that they come from empty. They're designed for this purpose, throughout the day, those units have moved when when fire trucks are doing on-duty training. So instead of having your fire station empty while the firefighters are training, an adaptive response unit moves there. So that that service area is always covered, in the event that there's a fire, most training is canceled, so those units can be redeployed. These nine hundred series trucks, as Jim uh mentioned, that's what they're designed to do, is to fill in these gaps. There were three of them in the Daisy Mountain Fire District as as my uh resources around the city of Phoenix, their resources run Daisy Mountain.
Cool. And I'll I'll ask a uh a question, I probably shouldn't go there, but uh Thursday night, late Thursday night, there was a. Uh, you might have saw this on the news, also a large working house fire of a house under construction. At um Dynamite and Sixtieth Street. Okay, that was, you know, I got questions from the uh. You know, from Carefree. That was dispatched as a Scottsdale incident, the intersection of Sixtieth and Dynamite is a Scottsdale address. And so it was responded with Phoenix and Scottsdale and the incident commander, actually the same one that was on your water rescue. Um, Andy McDonald, anyway, they responded over there, they couldn't get an updated address, it went around and around, they got there, they saw this house under construction. They used their stand guns, they didn't commit any real resources, they used the big death guns on top of the truck for the Phoenix and Scottsdale unit. And then when Rome Metro finally got there with the two units from Carefree. They turned it over to them and let them handle it, which is what the vote today told you that they want to handle it with their own resources. So then the question would turn about be. Who was covering Carefree while they were on that incident for quite a while? So.
What you don't want to have happen, and I'm sure you can all appreciate this, is I train my firefighters to do the fire, the fire truck job. They pay me to be an administrator and a incident manager. So when a fire truck goes on fire, you you don't want to put them in the middle of some political hot bed of controversy. So when the units are dispatched, fire captains, firefighters do their job, right? So if they get dispatched to do it, that's what we want them to do, we don't want them to be taking all these things into consideration, so and they do that. So in in this case, they did it, you know, the address was updated shortly thereafter as it was determined that it was north of. Dynamite on Sixtieth Street, clearly a county island area. And uh, you know, you take the appropriate action after the incident is stabilized, but you want to put firefighters in the middle of that. And we didn't.
Well, mayor, if I'm ready. Or can I assume from your comments that you're questioning the reliability of the social media information network?
I think I might have been mentioned in it a couple of times. Not on purpose, I tried to stay away from. But anyway, that any question that you might have, that's that's the quarter, the next quarter, again, we're a little bit late this time because of all the budget stuff and everything, but beyond time. And again, next quarter will be um fiscal year. An entire fiscal year again, so you have a whole snapshot of what occurred in a year, years times.
And I'd like to, before I step away, I'd like to thank all of you that reached out to me uh after the loss of our. Firefighter Eric Flannery from occupational cancer, uh he passed away on uh April twentieth of the of last month. And we uh had his funeral uh two weeks ago, so a lot of you reach out to me and appreciate those words, thank you very much.
Okay, well, thank you very much, we're looking for motion adjourned. These jurors, thank you.